You know, I think the biggest misconception people have is that they'll say, "Where do you get the idea?" which implies that there's an idea, one per story. And the truth is, it's actually that you're connecting things that haven't been connected before. Like here, I was trying to connect our whole smartphone, too much information technology, with the idea of telepathy being one more level of that. And that we try to solve our problems. We constantly are trying to get relationships to be easier. You know, we're going to have eHarmony, or we're just going to be able to swipe pictures and see what we like. And we think that it's a matter of, I find somebody who likes Italian food and science fiction and white wine, and all is solved. And of course, that has nothing to do with relationships. Relationships are all about sacrifice and--
Compromise.
Compromise. And deeper, like a classic of romantic comedy is always the idea that you put together this mismatched couple. But then the truth is, as you go farther, you realize that they're mismatched only on the surface. And no matter what the surface looks like, really, these two people have a great deal in common. And here's what it is. And that's, they find that, and then they have a relationship. So I was interested in all those ideas. And then I was also interested in all the stupid telepathy junk that's, you know, the ESP experiments of Dr. Ryan and, you know, at Duke University--
At Duke, I went to Duke.
Yes.
So you heard a lot about Dr. Ryan--
Yes, well, and I'm from Colorado, which is where Bridie Murphy came from. How humiliating is that? And all these different things that, you know, the people now who think we can all, if we all think world peace together for two seconds, we'll get it. You know, it's just so bogus. And so I wanted to put the lie to all of those things, you know, so convince you that telepathy doesn't exist by having telepathy exist and stuff. And then about all the, how everybody thinks it would be great to know what other people were thinking. But, I mean, aside from the, I could, you know, my marriage could break up in moments if my husband knew what I was thinking aspect, there's also the whole, what makes you think that you would be left alone? My God. You would, you know, the CIA, the NSA, that Wall Street would, you would be the greatest insider trader ever.
Advertisers.
Advertisers. And the people who would want to get you to find out the codes into people's computers and their passwords. And, I mean, it's just, it would be terrible. And so things rapidly get very serious in this book, even though it's a light-toned book. The things at stake are really pretty serious.
And I'm so thrilled that you're doing a romantic comedy, because we have talked about how much you love romantic comedies, and I do, too.
I do. And they're not romances. And that's the hardest job that I have, is convincing people the difference between the romantic comedy and the romance. They're two different species.
Oh, yeah.
So, but yeah, and I was, I'm very happy with this book. But I'm happy now after many, many rewrites. And so I'm very pleased that it's coming out. And I got to get, I just got into all sorts of bizarre areas I didn't think I was going to get into when I started the book, so.
And I saw the cover for it.
Yeah.
And it's a beautiful, who did the cover? I couldn't find out who the artist is.
I don't, no, it's a photographer.
Oh, so it's a--
And it's, I think it looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a man and a woman, and they're like falling--
Falling.
And reaching out.
They're falling, yeah.
Pretty cool. Did you, maybe you won't want to answer this, did you crib anything from any of the classic romantic comedies while you were writing this? Did you, like, slip in anything?
I don't, there are quotations at the beginning of every chapter that are taken directly from romantic comedies.
From the movies we love.
Absolutely, the movies that we love. But I wasn't thinking of any particular, I mean, this is a classic mismatched couple, which is a standard of romantic comedy. And I, you know, my goal is to find new, really good romantic comedies. And, you know, the phrase, "Many Balthons died to bring us this information." My husband and I have sacrificed ourselves and watched so many terrible movies that claim to be romantic comedies or are advertised that way, and they don't even have a clue as to what a romantic comedy is. But we found this wonderful one just recently. And that is, no, I'm not going to talk about Primeval, my favorite television show, which is in fact a romantic comedy. But this was called Sleeping With Other People.
Ah.
And it is not, it's the last movie that you would, we got it, you know, we got it through Netflix because they said it was a romantic comedy. And it's about a couple of sex addicts who meet at a Sex Addict Anonymous meeting, whatever those are. And I would never have thought this would be a good romantic comedy. And as we went through it, I was like extremely nervous. I'm like, are you, do you know what you're doing, or are you going to blow this? And it's great.
I'll remember.
It's got one of the best endings I've seen in a long time. I promptly bought a copy, shipped it off to my daughter, and said, "You have to watch this, and you have to tell me what you think." And she adored it and is passing it on to other people, so.
I will remember that and get on Netflix when I get home--
Yes.
--with my wife and watch it.
Yes, it's just a great movie. So it's a little, I don't recommend it to everybody because it's kind, it's R-rated, and it's not your standard romantic comedy. So I'm like, there are friends I have who, they don't want anything tougher than When Harry Met Sally. So I'm not going to show that, this to them, but, oh, very romantic.
I will, I will check that out.
Great movie.
So you finished Crosstalk--
I finished--
--and that's coming out. Have you started anything new?
You know, I'm hesitant to start because I was under deadline for so long, and I was under so much pressure. And I'm too old to be under that much pressure. So I'm working on some short stories right now. I have a couple of stories that I started before the book. And then I read the first half at a convention, and then, since then, people have been bugging me, "Where is that story? Whatever happened to that story? Where did that story come out?" And the truth is, neither one of them is done. So I'm working on those stories. I'm going to finish those. I'm working on a couple of other new things. One about the Isle of Capri, and one about a mysterious bookshop. I've always loved mysterious bookshop stories. And then, but the next book, I'm not, I'm not totally sure yet. One thing, I had originally, instead of this telepathy novel, I was going to work on my Roswell novel, which is kind of a road picture novel. And all about Roswell and alien invasions and all kinds of things, and, which I also don't believe in, but which I thought would be very funny. And I want to tell the real story of Roswell, because people don't understand that they know exactly what happened at Roswell. It's not a mystery. It is a cover-up, but it was a cover-up of a Cold War-era project, not a cover-up of aliens.
Right.
And so I want to get all that out there. And I want to explore my conspiracy theory about why Monument Valley appears in so many places in westerns. I mean, so many geographical places in westerns. It moves all the time, you know? It's so weird. And I was watching Evolution with David Duchovny, it's a science fiction movie. And it was like sort of north of Glen Canyon. I'm like, no, it's not, it's south of Glen Canyon. And then, of course, in the original Stagecoach, it's somewhere between Tucson and Lordsburg at the bottom of Arizona.
It goes everywhere. I am so excited that you're doing more of your short fiction, because I love it.
Oh, good.
And we have run out of time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's fine, and I just love talking to you. And thank you so much for taking your time out of your incredibly busy schedule to talk with us.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that I got to come.
And that's it for Mia at Fast Forward and for Connie Willis. Thanks for joining us.
When I heard what Big Tobacco said, at first I was really angry and just surprised and baffled at how absurd and ignorant that statement is. But then it also sparked a really deep desire to want to empower. I really wanted this art to be another form of resistance. I hope that it's not only something that people want to wear or have, but that it also creates a connection between the viewer and the art in a way that inspires.
Oh, I didn't know if you told him this. Oh, good. Okay. How'd he say it? You should have corrected me. I'm running my head now.
You've been calling worse.
Hemaph-- hemaphyth?
One minute, one minute.
Hemaphyth, okay. All right, well, we'll see how that goes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Special Meeting on March 13th, 2023. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
Beneath, Hemah Vathi.
Here.
Close. Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted in the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q&amp;A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll-call vote. We are not doing resident comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will go right into the topic at hand. First up, we have the fiscal year 2024 departmental budget meeting. Lynn or Mike, who do we have going first?
We have veterans. That was the lead edition today.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm okay. How are you?
Great, thank you. All right, do we have any questions for veterans?
I did, I have one question.
Hey, Lena, thanks for joining tonight. I appreciate it.
This is Dan Zwerko. Just had one question. Can you help me understand why the expenses for the veterans' benefits are declining?
Sure. Chapter 115 is an needs and access-based program that Massachusetts requires or has at the U.S. state. And since the pandemic, I haven't been able to do the level of outreach that I had been doing pre-pandemic. But now with restrictions being lifted, I do, I intend to get back to that level of outreach again. I actually have an appointment on April 12th at 1:30 at Genesis House to give a presentation for new residents there that may be veterans or may be unremunerated classes of veterans that qualify. In addition to that, we have had veterans pass away during the pandemic. It's been a declining number since then, and it's not just Long Meadow, unfortunately. It's kind of statewide right now for the same reasons.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Lena, is it, I seem to recall that veterans' benefits are lag a year of reimbursement, is that? So--
It takes about 18 months for reimbursement, so therefore the funds go back into the general fund, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the rest of the board? No, that's it. Thank you, Lena.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Bye-bye.
Building and Community Development was next on the list.
Okay. Hi, Paul. Thanks for coming in. Any questions for Paul? Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, I have a couple.
Paul, thanks for coming in. Not so much the finances as kind of related to finances. And my first question has to do with something that we've gone back and forth on over the years, and that is building electrical and plumbing inspectors, whether they're town employees or contract people or people we-- Can you just talk a little bit about the benefit, what you're finding? Is it working better the way it is? Are we having trouble, you know, we've gone through trouble hiring and not hiring and this stuff?
I think it's working out great the way it is now. The problem before that, we're getting paid per inspection, and procurement was, you know, they didn't like it because they were getting over $10,000 a year. So we'd have to have gone out to bid, and we couldn't really put that out to bid because there'd be no way keeping track of the inspections and permits.
So you're saying that the--
So we made them town employees at 15 hours a week, so that we wouldn't have to go through the procurement laws.
And, because I saw, I think I saw that we went out for, we had, we went, had to hire one of those this year, that I saw a job--
Electrical, yeah.
Electricals, and we haven't had any too much, too much trouble getting those people?
We only had one application for that job.
Luckily, it was a highly qualified person.
Yeah, highly qualified individual, and we hired them on spot.
We got lucky with that.
Okay, the other question I have is about the, obviously, the increase in the budget this year is because of our two part-time code enforcement officials. I'd just like a quick comment on how that's working, because I think we're going to get questions about that, too.
Yeah, I think it's working great. They've cleaned up a lot of violations around town, and they've created procedures and protocols, and we've had meetings, you know, they're still new, but I think it's working out great.
I know this isn't the purpose of them necessarily, but do you anticipate any funds coming in to the enforcement officers?
Yeah, we're going to be, right now, there was, I just looked today, there was three, three tickets issued for 300 each. So we will collect on fines, but I'm not sure how much, I can't predict.
I just wanted to comment on the warrant article. That was a smart idea to make them, to change that, so there's no question about authority. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that came up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Have you been able to identify any trends yet of the types of violations that we're seeing most in town?
Yeah, it's boats, trailers, commercial vehicles, cars parked on lawns, you know, the main ones.
And then, I mean, obviously, they're the first folks to be doing this job, so just kind of like any, like initial feedback or observations from them about, you know--
People are responsive, they, you know, it's, they do a lot of educational stuff, too. You know, if they see something, they say something, basically. But then you have some people that, you know, won't fight it, but 90% of people, once they know they're in violation, they'll correct it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
That's it.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. I have some sample letters and stuff that we created for the, if you guys are ready, I can email them tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Let's see what you're doing. That'd be great. Thank you.
The Adult Center is next. Unless you had any questions for Corinne, who's also here from Planning and Community Development.
I don't think so. Thanks, Corinne.
You're welcome.
Great job.
And Adult Center was next.
Hey, Jim.
Hi, good evening. How we doing?
Doing fine. Thanks for coming in.
Sure.
Trying to find my spot here. Oh. Joe, this is Josh. I had a question on the food pantry manager. I saw that has come off the agenda, I'm sorry, off the budget, and I know there's some backstory to it. Do we know, do you have a plan going forward? And if we do have to hire someone, how is that going to fit into the budget?
Yeah, my understanding, it was put under our support staff line item of the budget, and yeah, the plan would be in place to add that person for the new fiscal year to solidify food pantry operations going forward.
I just realized I asked that at the last meeting.
Okay.
And I got the same answer. So that's a good thing. That was a test on, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, sure.
Should have written, written that down. Anyway, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I have two things. First is, because of the people at home, I want to point out to people who have made comments to me about the school department budget, that we've increased, or I should say, the town of, the council on aging budget for 2024 has increased 8.9%, almost 9%. Well, it's just about, almost double what the school department budget is going up. And I know numbers are, you know, percentages can be deceiving, but I think it's important for people to understand that we are supporting the Adult Center, and the folks that say, "How come the schools go up so much," ought to at least see that number of 9% or 8.9% increase in the COA or Council on Aging budget. So, you know, I think that was worth pointing out. The other thing I just wanted to ask about is there are some increased costs here that are due to the reduction in support from Faloka, and I just wanted to know, you know, how that plays into your budget thinking, Jim?
Yeah, you know, our increases were for a couple of our newly added positions. As far as Faloka, you know, they've still been very supportive in certain areas, although they're planning to come back and cut back in certain departments because of the reduction in some of their donations. You know, we're still able to rely on them for a lot of our special programs and things like that. So I don't think that, you know, some of their cutbacks are necessarily going to affect our general line items. I think going forward, we'll still be able to offer, you know, the types of programs and services that we've been accustomed to. We'd have to kind of change a couple of the things where there has been some limitations with things that they're going to support, like our volunteer luncheon and how we distribute our newsletter. But I do have a plan in place to be able to, you know, to make those arrangements, and I think that will be okay. But it really won't change our programming structure for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
Yes, Jim, just to follow up on that, so would you venture to say that since the Faloka no longer runs the gift shop, that that's been a major decrease in terms of their fundraising efforts?
I would, sure, I would say that that's a piece of the show. I don't want to speak to all their fundraising efforts and how else that they secure their funds, but the loss of the gift shop, I would assume, has definitely had an impact on their finances.
Yeah. Is there ever a chance that they would consider moving the gift shop to another location in town? Have they ever talked about it?
I haven't, yeah, I haven't had that discussion with them.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you. Rest of the budget looks fine.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Jim.
Okay, folks, thank you. Have a good night.
Parks and Rec next?
Yes. We missed, we missed Health Department. Sorry, my apologies. Somehow we skipped over them.
Good evening.
Hi, Finn, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, of course.
I know we had a question for Health. Is that for you, Dan?
Yeah, actually, I had one question. Thank you. Finn, this is Dan Zwerko. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. With the opioid settlement funds at this time, does your office have any specific plans or projects in mind that will leverage these funds in FY '24?
Oh, yeah, actually, we already started. One thing we just purchased was a Sharps drop-off container that's going to be placed at the Adult Center. It's a place for people that have syringes, to drop them off for free and safely. We are planning on widening our access to opioid overdose reversal treatments like naloxone, as well as doing some heart reduction training. We're looking at getting medical lock boxes for residents so they can keep their, their medical supplies locked up, so, you know, their children can't get into them, as well as some heart reduction kits. Working with our public health nurse to kind of start up a, maybe a support group for families that are dealing with opioid use disorder. And another idea that had came up was actually hiring like a life coach, someone that's been through these issues, that can be there for people in our community that are suffering or in recovery, to try to help guide them through, you know, the issues.
Excellent. I appreciate it.
Yeah, those are just a few that we, you know, started looking into. It's a lot of work, but I think it's something that's going to really benefit Long Meadow.
Absolutely. Lynn, quick question. How, how long will we be receiving these funds for?
I think it's till 2035, 36, 38, some, somewhere.
38, I believe, I guess.
It's a while. It's the same amount each year?
No, it changes a little bit.
Okay.
We got the large chunk of money, it was like $120,000 or $30,000. That represented the biggest portion of our settlement. And then moving out from there, it's between $26,000 and $32,000 a year.
Gotcha. So Finn, as a follow-up, where does that put us in terms of dollars, you think, remaining with those projects?
I, I mean, the Sharps container, it only costs, the drop-off container only costs about nine and three grand, but it's hard to really price out some of these things until we're actually, you know, really in it and doing it. It's hard for me to say it at this moment.
Can I just clarify, too? That amount of money I was just referencing was for the first settlement. There is a new settlement that we do not know yet exactly how much we're getting.
Yeah, there's multiple sources. I think they sue CVS, Walgreens, a number of others. So there's money coming in from at least four different sources. I also like, when we get to the warrant, I'd just like to propose maybe an alternative way of handling that money, that I can discuss with the board later, as opposed to going through this budgetary process, be handled slightly different.
And how tight are the controls on those funds?
There's eligible uses that have, it has to fit into certain buckets, but it's pretty broad within that.
Go ahead, Mark.
Finn, I'm not sure if this question's for you, or maybe it's for Lynn and Paul, but where do the payments from other towns in the regional health consortium show up in our, in this budget? And, you know, some of the people that we have that are, I should ask it from a different point, are all the people that show up on this budget as employees, full-time Long Meadow, or are they all shared? And if they're shared, how is that shown on the budget? I think there's only one, is it only one employee, and that's the director? It says public health nurse, it says staff clerical, it's--
Yeah, so the health director, public health nurse, and staff clerical all existed prior to forming the intermunicipal agreement. There are other positions that are part of the intermunicipal agreement. Those are covered by the Public Health Excellence Grant. So that grant shows up under special revenue.
Right. And the other thing, Mark, we're only budgeting for the health director. The other amounts are recommended at zero. Right. Because they're, again, they're budgeted through a special revenue account grant. And that's where the revenues from the other communities would also be going into, would be going into that grant also, kind of as an offset to the total. So if I go back to the, our revenues, Paul? If you go back to the general fund revenues, you're not--
You, you, if you go back to the general fund revenues, you're not going to see them. You, you would have to get another report for the special, our special, um, special, special revenue accounts, that's where they would be shown, I don't think you have.
I know this isn't supposed to be a phrase that we use in this, but it's kind of off-the-books money, off of these books money?
Yep, yep. You know, you could just, I'd say, you know, if there's a grant for, you know, fire safety equipment, you know, some, something to that nature, you don't see it going through the budgetary process. It comes, it's accounted for in another, it's, it is called a special revenue fund, but it's accounted for there and the expenditures go out of that non-budgetary account.
So I guess Lynn, my question is, who oversee, well, you oversee it, but, but who's, who audits it, who checks it? How, you know, how would we have a, the normal checks and balances we have on our budget on the special revenue and, or even on the health, you know, shared health services program if money going in and going out isn't reported monthly or quarterly through our budget?
Uh, it's reported to DPH, there, we, Finn has strict grant requirements with them that he annual, uh, I don't think it's annual, it's, um, quarterly, isn't it Finn?
Yeah, quarterly reporting to the state on the spending.
So there's, there's that level, um, and then there's also just the standard level that we have in all departments with also, all of our purchasing. It's reviewed by the, um, purchasing department and accounting.
So I'm going to use an analogy of Westcom because Westcom was somewhat like that for a year or two where the state grants basically covered the cost of Westcom, but now more and more is that is showing up on the, in the town. So as this state grant for shared services in health services declines, it will start showing up in, will it start showing up in this budget? Are increased costs and if that's the case, then where will that additional or that revenue from partner communities show up?
It, it, yeah, it should show up in the general fund. Again, as you go through the appropriation process, but there will be offsetting revenues that would have to come in and probably be reported and, you know, other departmental revenue would be the section, when I send you that local receipts printed out on a monthly basis, there, there is a category called other departmental revenue, it would probably fit somewhere in, into that category.
Okay, but, but for 2024, that doesn't apply because it's all through the grant. And, and when does that grant start to fade, you know, start to decline or phase out?
They had, they committed to three years of funding, um, and so we have a verbal commitment that FY '24's funding amount will be the exact same, which is at 226, is that right?
Yeah.
And every opportunity we get, we request additional funds because we have been one of the more successful shared health arrangements in the state.
Are we getting people, can we get people other, other communities interested or we're not interested in expanding it?
We're not actively seeking other communities at this point, uh, there's been some that have inquired, but, um, I, I wouldn't say we're actively seeking any, right Finn?
Right.
Thank you.
Finn, one last question for me on the, the opioid settlement. Is there a, a mechanism or program for unused drugs to be dropped off, uh, to be disposed of?
Yeah, we've, at the police station, there is a drug drop-off container. And we also run, well, not through us, but, um, this town does do the drug take-back days occasionally throughout the year too.
Yeah, I've seen those, I didn't know if there's another way, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you Finn, have a good night.
Thank you guys, you too.
Parks and Rec is next.
Good evening, everyone.
Barry, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
I, I just have a, a question on, uh, we have a warrant article going on potentially for this, for the annual town meeting about advertising. Uh, have you done any projections on what kind of income that would bring?
We've done some preliminary work, we, we've looked at what the science, the direct cost to the science would cost the department, we've done benchmarking, what other communities do. We know that, um, West Springfield has a viable sign policy, they do it through the school department, um, and it really is going to depend on how many we decide to sell. And this plan will not only be for Wolf Swamp, but last in a town meeting, it was approved for Turner Park and List Park and Wolf Swamp Park, so we have some opportunities there.
So it's, uh, the, remains to be seen how much exactly that would potentially bring in?
Correct.
And do you anticipate any particular use of those funds or will it just be generally going into parks funds or general fund?
So we have a warrant article on the May 23 town meeting warrant to establish a, a separate revolving fund for this sign revenue. So if that passes, it will establish a revenue, a revolving fund that will be specifically utilized, most likely it will offset direct costs associated with your payment. So it will be, um, we will have sign revenue coming in and it will be maintained to, um, to offset any revenue, any field maintenance that we need.
Excellent.
And that, that really can vary, that could be, that could be operating funds, that could be offsetting capital funds.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Barry, there was a decision this year to move the majority or at least good part of the assistant director's salary to the revolving fund. What went into that decision?
It's been a discussion for several years, um, that it's, it's commonly known that the department operates a lot of our programming, that the revenue goes into the revolving fund and that's all sectors of the department, that's the daycare, that's the day camps, that's aquatics and that's tennis. So the assistant director's time, a good portion of it is allocated for programs and services where the revenues go into revolving. So it's been a discussion for many years and I, I think this was, um, perhaps looked at just as a decision to keep the general fund healthy and, and a good opportunity to do that. So I think 50% of that will go in, will come out of the revolving fund and then the remaining 50% will still be funded through the general.
Thanks, I, I just expressed my comments, that, my concern that this, this works really well when we've got a healthy revolving fund, but, you know, I don't want to look backwards, but, you know, when, when we had no daycare, the revolving fund dropped precipitously and we'd have been left with a, a, a pretty big salary that wasn't covered. And I guess my, my sense is that if we're going to pay somebody out of a revolving fund, if the revolving fund money goes away, we have to understand that it's likely that that person's job goes away. And if that's in fact not the case, you know, then to some degree moving, paying them out of the revolving fund is simply shifting money from what I'll call tax-based to fee-based. And, and I know we have a lot that we need to do in that regard because of the increased demand or the increased pressure on the budget to stay below the two and a half percent level, but as we move more and more expenses, what I'll call routine expenses from tax-based to fee-based, the risk is that when those fees go away, there's going to be pressure to remove those expenses. And this is a, a good example of that. So, I mean, for 2024, it looks like it's, you know, I'd almost say a no-brainer, it pays for itself and it seems pretty logical, but if we'd done it four years ago, we'd have found ourselves in some real serious hot water when the, the revenue into our revolving fund disappeared. So I guess that's, that's my caution and I, I don't know how to better address it, but I'm very leery of moving things from taxpayer-based to fee-based because those, those fees can go away. And I think that, that leads into my next comment or question, and I don't know what it is, but it's my, my favorite topic Barry that you know about is, is daycare. And, and, you know, how the daycare is running and whether daycare is a, is a core function of the, of the community or just a, a way for the town to bring it, bring in some revenue. And so I guess my question to you is how is daycare running and what's the forward prospect for that? Because I know it's very expensive, but, it's a very expensive program.
I'll go back just a little with, with one of your first comments and I think one of the charges of my department and because we have opportunities that other departments don't have is we have the opportunity to create revenue mix within the department. So we are not completely reliant on general fund and that's something that we're starting to explore with field maintenance and other branches of, of the, um, of the facets of the department, we have an opportunity for revenue mix. So we have an opportunity to take in program fees, but that's not our only source of revenue. We also take in donations and sponsorships and grants and the management of the department really, I, I think the health of the revenue mix depends on the management of the department. So to your point, if for any reason the user fees go away, it's my hope that we have other facets of revenue that we can rely on. And I think we've, we've built the department revenue as such, so, so we have that. As far as the daycare, we, I, I told members, I did a 10-year lookback for the purpose of this meeting and it's, it's one of our, we have, we have probably 14 facets of the department, we have, I call them compartments of the department. So we break out every single program area, everything from the daycare to school age to day camps, to facilities, aquatics, and we break it all down individually and we, we look at revenues and expenses within each of those. And we have profit centers and we have cost centers. Our three largest profit centers are the school age programs, which are before and after school, primarily because there's very little overhead. We can utilize part-time staff and have high numbers of enrollment and do very, very well with that. Second is the daycare, um, third would be the day camps and sport camps after that and then our dance program, which we're a little unique in the sense that we're a recreation department and that's another example of a, a commercial venture that we do within the recreation department. So we do pretty well. With regard to the daycare, I will certainly say we are still recovering from the, the pandemic and COVID. Prior to that, we were doing very, very well and in FY '18, our net was over 25,000, in FY '19, it was over 32,000. And we, um, from FY '21 to '22, um, potentially to '23, we're still slightly recovering, but it's not a break-even situation, it is, consistently we, we show a profit within that, within that program. It's not a traditional Parks and Recreation, municipal Parks and Recreation venture, there's only a few in the Commonwealth that do it. I don't see that as a detriment, I think that makes us special. But that's perception, I think.
No, no, thank you Barry, I appreciate that. I, you know, the one thing I'll caution and I say this every year is make sure we have all full-in costs when we talk about the, the cost of daycare because there's building occupancy, there's electricity, there's heat, there's all that kind of stuff that the town covers as opposed to just the, the labor expenses, if you will, or the, I'll call the direct expenses of the daycare program, there's a lot of indirect, but I'll, I'll take it that you're, if you haven't been, you'll be including that for sure.
Josh, may I just, when it, when it comes to the presentation of the, um, um, the assistant director, what I'd like to do is, is change around the presentation to actually, within the general fund, appropriate the full salary with the understanding that the daycare will reimburse us. So that line item would go back up to the $80,000. The, the, on the revenue side, we would add that, that same amount to the revenue side. So net effect is really zero, um, but from a presentation standpoint, it now equates to how we're handling the daycare salaries, that we're fully funding 100% of the daycare salaries and we're getting reimbursed 100% instead of this 50-50 type of thing. That way, and essence market too, I think it would guarantee the person has an appropriation for the full fiscal year, um, so that, that person would again be, have that job. The only thing that if, if the revenues do fall short, it'll be like any other revenue estimate that falls short within the general fund. Hopefully it's absorbed from other surpluses and things to that nature. So just, there will be, again, I'm just proposing that that change to fully funding in the general fund and adding the reciprocating amount to the general fund revenues.
I mean, I think that's a great idea Paul, because like I said, the, the, the alternative is you expect if the revenues decline, the job goes away and, and we've had this job in our, in our town for quite a long time and I don't think the job would go away just because some of the revolving fund revenue declined, so I think that's a good idea, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
So Paul, I've got a question, would, would it make sense to have a policy that keeps the revolving fund in that area to a certain level so that we'd always have stuff, have some cash available for that thing?
You know, there, the, the statute really only allows for a certain amount of excess to be carried forward. We have it carried forward a little bit more, um, and in that case, I know Barry has been doing some, some extra, um, funding of some of the maintenance portions of what goes on in the recreation department, um, but technically it's, it's, you know, through the statute, there is a limitation of how much we can actually bring forward.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any questions Paul? Alright, thank you Barry.
Thank you.
Looks like we have, uh, police next.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Alright, anyone want to start off?
Uh, go ahead.
The electric, or I'm sorry, the vehicle replacement, can you explain what's being replaced?
So, uh, each year we've tried to stay on a, a schedule of doing, uh, two new cruisers a year. The officers here, we tend to accrue approximately 30,000 per year per cruiser. Naturally, they run 24/7, um, they're the mobile office, um, you know, if I may sound somewhat crude, they just get beat on, um, and not out of intentional mistreatment, it's just, it's just imagine of a car just running constantly. Years ago, it was implemented, I think, my predecessor actually had a, a schedule of two cruisers, two cruisers, three cruisers, kind of as a, um, as a replacement cycle. Since I've been here, uh, I've just asked for two per year and it seems to be working out quite well. I think with the enhancements of technology and the cars getting better, um, we can get a few more miles out of them. Truthfully, it's about, you know, when they hit about 110, 115,000 miles, they really start to, to show their age. They're still, they still run, we maintain them quite well, um, but as far as an emergency quote-unquote, um, you know, certified vehicle, uh, they, they tend to get a little loose, the seats are ripped, uh, the interiors are rattly, the door panels are falling off, things of that nature, the engines run, uh, but they're, they're, they're less, uh, I guess, uh, you're less confident in its abilities to, to respond to a call, um, you know, with the lights and siren exceeding the speed limit. Fortunately, unfortunately, the community's gone to a green community, um, and I say unfortunately because again, these cruisers can be utilized, they can be kind of decommissioned from a police standpoint, but then maybe turned into a, another department. DPW, for instance, uh, we, we gave them one years ago, is a, is a blue unmarked Ford Explorer, we gave them years ago, it's still running, um, and again, not for emergency purposes, but, you know, to run around town to check water meters, things like that. It's a great cost saving for the town. I recently, uh, we transferred one to Paul Healy in the building, uh, the building department last year, I believe, or a couple of months ago now. It seems to be working out fine, it's all-wheel drive, it replaced a, a less fuel-efficient vehicle, so it was a win-win for everybody, but I understand the goal of being coming a, a green community, I know we're moving towards that. So a long-winded answer, I'm not sure if this is what you wanted, but I can talk a dog off a meat wagon when it comes to cars.
That, uh, that brought me to my question that I was, uh, wanted to touch on, so as we're becoming green, it, would an electric vehicle, I know they're more expensive off the bat, will they last longer because they are, will them running longer, is that more efficient because they're not, the engine isn't actually running?
So, a fully electric vehicle right now, from what I've heard, I've done some exploration on the matter, a few departments in the Commonwealth have gone to a fully electric car, that's a plug-in at night, uh, a Tesla, if you will, a Ford Mach-E. Those vehicles have not proven to be very beneficial for police use, the 24/7 line car, administrative maybe, um, you know, the, the detective's car perhaps, or the chief's car, if you will. We have two vehicles, since I've taken over, I've, I've purchased two hybrid vehicles. I just have I just had Sean do the numbers for me prior to today's meeting, because I anticipated the question. The hybrid cruisers are turning out to be much more fuel-efficient. These numbers maybe not, they won't blow you away, but considering these vehicles are sitting idle, so it's it's maintaining miles per gallon, not gaining not gaining any mileage, but just running. But just for a point of reference, the the hybrid cruisers are now getting approximately eighteen miles per gallon. A conventional gas cruiser right now is getting about twelve, eleven to twelve right now. So I, there is a cost savings there. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, the two hybrid cruisers I have have been more, or I should say have been less reliable, more costly to maintain. And it just so happens, I literally brought a vehicle in today, the one the the older hybrid of the two, it needs a new front differential and the two front side axles on the vehicle, which is going to be, I'm hearing, potentially fifteen to two grand. So I'm not seeing that in the gas vehicle, so I don't know. Again, I I love the idea of technology. I love the idea of hybrid vehicles. I think it's interesting. I think we're pushing it a little fast for police use. I don't think it's there to to I don't think they're quite there for rigors of the day-to-day use that we're using, but there's definitely a value to it. Back to your point, though, there is an increase in my budget for vehicle replacement. I asked for a hundred thousand this year, and that's for two vehicles. And quite frankly, that's actually undercutting what I'm going to need. For 2023, Ford just increased the value of their the prices of their vehicles. A gas, a gas hybrid, excuse me, a gas Explorer right now is going to cost me forty-two thousand eight hundred. That's up six thousand dollars from last year. The hybrid is going to be forty-five thousand dollars, again, six thousand dollars. So production delays, whatever you want to call it, or they just realize they can ask for more money, and we're going to pay it.
Are you seeing a big lead time on getting the vehicle?
Yeah, I was fortunate enough, the I just purchased my K-9 officer, a brand-new hybrid cruiser. That's the second one we have in the fleet. We just implemented that last month. I don't know if the if my vendor liked me, or if I just happened to time it right, but I was able to get one within two months. And that's about a third of a third of the way what it normally takes. It's usually about five to six months. But again, the cruisers are, you know, cost, like I said, forty-five to forty-eight now. But then the upfitting, which is the emergency lighting, the radios, the gun racks, the cage, that's about eleven thousand per unit. So, you know, hypothetically, if I were to get two hybrids this year coming, it would all upfitted to be about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. I'm asking for a hundred. I'm going to hopefully do a shell game at the end, and hopefully have some residual money left over in my general fund or thing like that. I don't want to blow out, you know, any budget. I don't want to look like I'm being frivolous in my requests. I I want to ask for what's needed. But I do want to raise the idea, or the point, that my cruiser is in and of itself, a hundred thousand does sound like a lot. I get it every year. But it is kind of one of those things. It's a price of business for us, and we we need it. You know, we're not, I don't have a fleet of brand-new vehicles in the back. I have five vehicles currently in my fleet that have over one hundred and ten thousand miles on them. I have one vehicle that's twelve years old that it runs. It's an old Tahoe, but it's it's got more rust on it than than a than a barnacle on a ship at the bottom of the ocean. So, you know, that that was a request for that, and that was the reasoning for the increase in budget.
All right. Thank you, Chief Socks. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, in terms of rust, you know, one of the things, the DPW has that great place for washing through vehicles. Does the police department use that?
We do. We have a Sally Port, we call it, in the station, in which my officers, if they have free time, usually on the midnight, they'll they'll wash the cruisers. With the implementation of the new DPW building, my officers have instructed, usually just in the wintertime, run the cruisers a few a few times, because there is an undercarriage spray. And that's that really will benefit, you know, the salt buildup on the undercarriage. It typically, again, we're getting rid of cruisers about four years in, so the miles accrue before rust typically occurs. It's that twelve-year-old Tahoe that we have is it's been a great car. It's just, unfortunately, it's time. We're going to put that out to pasture. I have three of my vehicles earmarked to go to auction coming up.
Okay.
How much do I typically fetch at auction?
So to Chad Thompson's credit, Town Procurement Manager, years ago, we used to use the Cruiser's trade-in. So when we bought our vehicle, the vendor would say, well, we'll take your trade-in. It was nice for us because we could get the trade-in money and apply it towards that upfitting. So instead of, say, eleven thousand dollars, they'd give you twelve hundred dollars for a Crown Vic. So we'd come off the top, you know, the bottom, whatever you want to call it. The town then went into saying, no, we're going to take it and go to auction. Chad does a great job. And through that, as a gov bids or whatever he puts it on, again, the Explorers are getting more money now because they're an SUV. It's all-wheel drive, so there's a premium for them as opposed to an old dinosaur Crown Vic. But I want to say they're getting between four and five thousand dollars per unit, as opposed to, if I were to say, go to the trade-in with a vehicle to a dealership with my vendor, he'd probably give me like fifteen hundred. So town does make money. Unfortunately, the PD has to spend more money upfront kind of thing.
Mark? I was going to ask about the vehicles. But Paul, what line item do do our auctions show up in? You know, the revenue for these, and is there any way of, if you will, giving the police department credit for the what comes back? I know it just goes into the general fund.
I think we need to give Chad credit as opposed to the police department.
Speaking of the truth.
Again, if there's the four-sheet sum remark.
Yeah.
That if you went to, I think it's going to be my ninety-nine, it's more than likely in other departmental. So that all the auction funds will go into that line item.
Okay.
And Mark, just to that point, the hybrid vehicles being a green community, we we do get a five thousand dollar credit per purchase of a hybrid, one time per year, if we purchase a hybrid cruiser. So we've done that. The past two cruisers we did purchase, we did get five thousand dollars back. Again, I didn't see a dime of it. The town did. But eventually, we're still getting the money back. So there is some benefit there. The hybrids do cost money, sticker, but the town does get a five thousand dollar credit back. And I did kind of speak with Lynn and Paul about this, that, you know, if it were to get to that point where if I was really in the red on a cruiser outfit or purchase, we did, you know, I'd probably come with my hat out, asking for some money somehow, some way. But I'm doing, you know, I'm trying to make it work with what you guys give me.
Just as a comment, not that it impacts hybrids, but the new federal law on electric vehicles gives the equivalent amount of money that an individual would get as a tax credit to municipalities or other nonprofits. I think we're going to use that as part of what we're purchasing for the building inspectors. But but I know you're not there yet, but...
I think we're we're all going to get there. Like I said, that's not like a broken record. For police use right now, I I just heard of one, one department out east has a, they bought a beautiful, brand-new Ford Mach-E, which is a Mustang hybrid, excuse me, plug-in electric. And, you know, it looks great, and they put it on the social media. And the problem is, it when the cold weather hit, it was maybe ninety miles per charge, which really wouldn't even get, you know, through two two cycles of a shift. So they ended up giving it to the detectives, and they, I guess, affectionately call it their coffee getter. So, you know, we're not there yet, but I think every year, we're seeing leaps and bounds. I think we're, you know, maybe in my time as chief, we'll start to see electric patrol.
I know Concord had a big presentation about it at the MMA meeting about, because they are all-electric, even their police vehicles.
Even the police vehicles.
Yeah, and and they're having all kinds of issues, especially in the cold weather. So it wasn't like they had the answers. They had
Right.
more problems than answers. But they, I mean, even to the, for Sean, even to their lawn mowers and and things like that, in in the DPW, they're trying to go, we're trying to go all-electric. So and and even those were a real problem. Thank you. I'm curious about technology, and I know we'll get there, but I don't want you being stuck, not having anything, any reliability issues. So I appreciate you for candor on that. Anything else?
I had a few questions, but I'll just, I'll pick one and follow up as needed. Are there other areas of interest or projects within your department that you would like to see improved but didn't put in for the budget, just because you're very conservative with your budget? No, I appreciate that. Thank you. You know, it's just, as we all know, I think I put it in my monthly reports now a few times, you know, I'm I'm finding some staffing shortages, and I'm having some challenges in recruitment and retention. I think the retention, if I may pat ourselves on the back collectively, the town, as we know, I lost two officers to state police and one to FBI. So as much as that hurts us losing staff, I also think it's it speaks volumes of what the town provides their employees, what kind of employees we hire to go to the quote-unquote bigger and better departments, if you will. But going back to that point, I'm trying my hardest. You know, I can only make it a a healthy work environment for my employees. I think I'm doing a good job. I would hope everyone would say the same. You know, I make the trainings available for my officers. If there's something that they're interested in, I try to pursue that. I try to back them and and build their their resumes, if you will, and make them the better officers. It's a great community to work for. I'm a little biased. I live here. I've been here twenty-six years. But I'm not the only department that's facing these challenges. It's not only statewide, it's nationwide. I read every article I can regarding this problem, if you will. And it's just, you know, we're a lot of police chiefs commiserate on that. So to your point, Dan, you know, I, it's a new generation of employees that we're dealing with, too. So there's a few factors involved as to why we're facing this shortage. But part of it is this new generation and what they determine to be a value or a benefit of the job. Me as a kid, I just wanted the money. I would do anything for the money, and I'd work every hour I could to work it. But the new kids I find, kids, if I will, they they like their time off. They they like these different things that, you know, to them. So it's like, it's hard for me to to allow time off because I need to have a staffing around the clock. So but again, my facility, my campus, the PD's an old building. Nick Dorgantis, I I can't thank him enough. My capital project, my kitchen, it's almost done, and I I'm extremely happy about that, because we were eating amongst rodent traps, and we had, it was nasty. But we have a beautiful kitchen, and it's a lot of the credit, if not all the credit, goes to Nick for that. And I also thank the town for supporting that. Moving forward, I don't want to just hit it all at once. So, you know, I have a fitness room I'd like to to enhance. We had an air quality study done, and it does show my department needs some help in some areas, some mitigation of mold and some air quality. And so those are the little things I'm trying to build upon to make it a nice place to work for these younger generation, because that's what I'm finding they find to be important. A nice locker room, a fitness room, you know, just the just the cleanliness of the department cruiser is going back to having some nice equipment. You know, I don't need all the toys. I don't need fancy things. We just want things to work. We want it to be nice and in good quality. So I guess you'll constantly see my capital projects come across your desk for that reason.
And speaking of tight budgets, Larry, can you remind us when the Westcomb Assessment, the state funding will run out?
Next, FY25 will be the last year.
Josh. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, chief, I think it was last month, you know, you talked in your report how you'd lost some folks, you know, going to the FBI, which is pretty impressive. And you know, in Pittsfield, they're using some social workers. I don't know if you've ever talked to the chief out there, but it's just something that I think you might want to look at. I mean, they might want to, they might stay longer. I guess that's the other side. You know, it's a different approach, because, you know, there's a lot of folks who just, you know, they could need some, have someone who has mental health training, and and I don't know how much we run into that in our town, but it's just something you could look into with Pittsfield. Ask him how it works. He's hiring a second one.
Yeah. So I would never want to give up a police position for a social worker, but I will say that it is on my radar. And without tipping my hand too much, I I'm working towards a project I think you're going to be very interested in. You're going to be very, I think the town will be very interested in it, as well as I'm excited about it. It's in the infant stages, but we are working towards a project in which we are seeking a grant, which maybe provides a coresponder that will be dedicated to the town alone. So again, infant stage right now, so I don't want to go too far into it, because I want to make sure I iron out all the the wrinkles before we commit to anything. But it's to that point, there's an obvious need for a coresponder in policing. I don't think it's in lieu of a police officer, but certainly needs to be in lockstep with. I think you need to have a team approach now to a lot of these calls, because, and I'm learning, quite frankly, you know, a crisis call is no longer just that person that might be having a cognitive issue, that might be in crisis. A crisis issue could be a death notification, which someone's loved one, you know, were at the front door telling their loved one passed away. They may need assistance. It could be just someone who, you know, the thirteen-year-old who's just having difficulty in school. So I think the the purview of a mental health worker is much wider than I even knew about or even considered up until starting this project and investigation. So stay tuned. I I don't want to sound too dramatic, but I I have something in the works, I think, that everyone will be very interested in knowing about. So and I envision that to happen within the next few months.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief Dearborn.
Good evening.
Evening. Well, you're going to get a, you're looking to get a new truck, right?
Uh, in three years.
Oh, in three years from now?
Yes.
So this is the first. And what truck will you be replacing?
It'll be Engine One, which is two thousand four.
Okay. And but the Quint, when would that have to be replaced? We got another
It's gonna hit eight years. It's not a twenty-year replacement.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So, you know, the truck that you were able to refurbish rather than replace, which truck was that?
Squad Four.
Okay.
Yeah, it's out now.
Okay, great. And when is that expected to be back?
About two weeks.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for being creative on on your use of that. Is there any other trucks or equipment that there are clever workarounds for replacing? Or is there any?
Yeah, we're looking, so the ambulance, obviously, the challenge is with getting equipment right now. You know, we have these warrant articles that are, you know, very unusual for all of us to put together. We're looking at three years out, planning here, two years out for an ambulance. So we've actually been looking at the some re-chassis options. So the engine, engine that we're specifying to replace, Engine One, we're going to buy that with a stainless steel body instead of aluminum. It's not a lot more money, but that will provide us an option for like two fire chiefs from now, to actually look at putting a new chassis underneath that rather than replacing the truck.
Really?
It's a possibility. Again, that'll be twenty years for now, hopefully. We're looking at that. We've looked at it for ambulances. And kind of with our formula, we have, we have three ambulances, two are operational ones, a spare. We keep them for twelve years, and by the time we're done with them at that that twelve years, the the bodies and the chassis are beyond the re-chassis option. So we haven't been, we haven't really looked at, we haven't been able to see a cost savings to the re-chassis ambulances. So so especially vehicles like the squad, it applies there. We're able to do that. So we'll take those opportunities when they come about. Our boat, our rescue boat, twenty years, we did refurbishment on that. We we put twenty-five thousand dollars into it. If you saw it today, you'd think it was brand-new. People don't believe it's twenty-two years old, so.
So the stainless steel, will it look like a DeLorean?
No. No, it will be painted.
Okay.
Yes. I insisted on that.
That's interesting.
Yes.
Really throw people off of silver.
There are some odd colors out there for fire trucks, though.
Go ahead. I just, I think, Chief Dearborn, you recall that back when we first created the fire truck, you know, fund that we were funding at the time, the the thought process was we we had three engines, and we replaced one every seven years. I know that the costs have gone way up since we we've really done that. But that whole concept was, at the time, I think it was, you know, it was probably Eric Madison, your predecessor, said, we could reasonably expect a truck to last twenty-one years, and therefore, we place one every three years. So that was the process by which we established this cycle that I think you still try to adhere to.
Yeah, we do. Yeah. And we adjust the capital plan each year to coincide with the with the fire truck investment plan. Obviously, replacing the Quint, I'm ballparking at this point. I have no idea what that thing's going to cost for Engine Two, but we're we try to maintain that. So even with the cycle, when we go through this next engine, we'll still have funding in the fire truck fund to continue to move forward to the next apparatus that needs to be replaced. So as long as we stay in that capital investment plan every year, we shouldn't need to borrow, or if we need to borrow, it should be for a very short time. The goal was to not need to borrow for fire apparatus or ambulances. So again, the ambulances are funded through the ambulance revenue.
Just like to talk to you a little bit about your forward staffing plan. Over the last couple of years, we've, you know, added some staffing or staffing authorization. I don't know if we actually got the people, but to the fire and more to the emergency medical services staffing, but they're all part of that. How do you see that moving forward at the aging of the town, the availability, you know, we've got two ambulances, that's probably as many as we're going to handle for now. How do you see your staffing projections moving forward?
So I did, I did submit a supplemental request this year to add one or two additional staff. We've seen a twelve percent increase in emergency medical calls since we, like, say, got back to normal after the pandemic. We, I think we agreed that we'd sit on that for a little while, make sure the revenue is going to remain. for a little while, make sure the revenue is gonna maintain. So my staffing right now is I have four groups of people, four shifts. So three of those groups are at six people right now. One of them is at five. I'd like to round that out to six and then create, actually not create, but refund a position that we had called the relief position, which that is, I hate to use the term an extra person because they're not, but they're a person I have the option to fill into shifts if somebody's out for injury, long-term illness. And I can also utilize that for impact staffing. So for example, from four to ten o'clock at night or three to eleven, I have, that's a busy period for us. So you can, the union contract allows me to sign that person to, and it actually reduces overtime. We had those positions in the past, they actually offset overtime to the point where they're cost neutral. So it's something we're talking about. I think we're open to the idea. And, you know, we may come back with you as long as the revenues stay, our revenues are very, very good right now. So as long as we stay that, and then we can do our part to pay for that position, I'd like to come back for that. So I will, to, to the police chief's point, I have also suffered some retention issues within the department. COVID, we took a hard hit. Doing EMS during COVID, you picture, you walk into a place, somebody's infected with COVID, tested positive, and you're gonna jump in the back of a hundred square foot box with them. You know, doesn't sound very funny, and it wasn't for some folks. So I did lose some folks. I lost two people to go to one nurse practitioner school, one to PA school, and I've lost two to other departments. When I, you know, we always exit interview people and one of the, so the feedback I've gotten is that those departments are staffed better than we are. And they actually are able to, there's a rotation at most departments where your, your primary ambulance, secondary ambulance, and off-the-ambulance assigned to an engine. La Meta Fire Department, although call-wise, we are comparable to our neighbors, we are the lowest staffed. East La Meta, for example, runs seven-person staffing. Little Bram run seven-person staffing. I'm not looking to get there. I'm just looking to get it, you know, to be on an equal playing field. We provide, you know, much the same with the chief. We provide a progressive, we're a very well-equipped department. I would like to, my folks do a great job at identifying our training. You know, we are highly regarded as a department. We are a training site for paramedics from the region and also doctors. So, so, you know, there's a lot of good things going on, but it's a different generation. So if you can go somewhere and make more money for less work, it's, you know, that's part of it. So I try to just tell the people how much I love them every day and keep coming to work, so.
Just a question. Where do you see the forward plan on, because you've been very effective in getting grants, and what do you see as your need for grants and, you know, your opportunities, I guess, Ben?
So I, yeah, I don't know if it was one of your questions, but you asked about the light item reduction, right?
Yes.
So we reduced, and I'll get right, I'll circle to the answer. So we reduced our equipment replacement light item this year because we, we, we're gonna be able to support with grants this year. At the moment, as we sit here today, we have two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in grant applications pending. If I'm fifty percent successful on that, it's a home run. We're over two point two million dollars in grant receipts in the last seven years. So every opportunity we get, we chase grants. Most of those grants this year are equipment centric. One of them is to replace all of our fire hose. You know, you don't think those fire hose wear out. Well, it does over a period of time when it's twelve, fifteen years old. So we're gonna replace all that. The biggest challenge we have is the turnout gear that we wear. We can only utilize that for ten years. And it can look great, but the regulations say you can only use that for ten years. It's eight thousand dollars for one set of that here right now. So that's the one, the most challenging things we have to keep up on. But right now, we're in a nineteen thousand dollar per year grant program. We're hoping that keeps up. So as long as we keep cycling the grants, my equipment needs are, I'm able to manage those kind of behind the scenes. Not that I won't come back and say, I didn't get the grants this year. I'm gonna need some dough. We also use grants to offset capital. So we use our twenty five year capital plan. We're start applying, we start looking, okay, what's coming up? Now we got air compressor for SEBAs. We'll say, okay, we need to start applying for grants for that, to offset that. So we take it off the capitalist. We've been really successful with that, so.
Are there grants out there that you don't have time to apply for?
So I have it, right now, I'm gonna say no. And some of it's late nights, you know, sitting in the office. I, we use a team approach. We have four of us that work on the grants. And then my, our, my administrative assistant, Andrea, she's very good at the grant management and the reporting part of it. So, and I don't know if any of this is in our job descriptions, but we, but it's for the better of the department and we do it. The, the reporting on especially the federal grants is arduous. And plus, and you get audited every few years. In fact, we're gonna start auditing it pretty quick, so. I wish I had a grant writer, but.
Well, if you do get to the point where that becomes, it may be worth it, worth its weight.
Yeah. And there's, there's other grants outside of the fire department through emergency management. And actually, Corinne's been great with that. We, we just got a grant for the hazard mitigation plan and, well, there's a bunch of grants out there that we, that I'm really happy to have her onboard for that, that purpose. So, because that stuff, honestly, that's where I was missing before in my role as the emergency manager. I just have those grants, I just have time to do, so.
Great. I guess the only other thing I want to do is just repeat the question I gave Barry about when we pay for people through fee-based programs rather than tax-based programs. And I know the ambulance fund is a, you know, significant and ongoing and appears to be a pretty steady revenue stream for, for fees that help us pay for that. But it's just a kind of a watch out. And I, you know, I always look at things that we're not considering and you never know when something could happen. But to me, that's a, just a, something that you need to be concerned about.
You know, Mark, you'll see newspaper articles come up about, which are false, about, you know, how municipalities charge way more than privates. I can tell you that that's a lie. But I see all those and then the different lobbies through the insurance agencies against EMS. That's stuff that keeps me up at night. So I hear you and I, trust me, I worry about it every day. So.
And I'm more worried about something like a COVID pandemic or something that people just stop calling our ambulance service.
Right.
It's not so much that, oh, it's cheaper for me to call, you know, the, the next Uber who comes along and running ambulance services.
Yeah, period in COVID, we saw twenty five percent decrease in our, in our, on our revenue. So it's absolutely real. So it's something I worry about. So thank you for that.
Thanks. The last question's around Westcom. So actually, on, on election day, there was a, there was a gentleman who unfortunately broke his leg. And I firsthand got to experience, I think, Westcom because I had called to get an ambulance. And it took so long that I just ran to your fire station, rang the bell. So I just wanted to get some feedback since we're paying fifty percent now between fire and police.
Yeah. So I'd like to actually offline talk to you about that experience because we don't get many customer complaints about dispatch or, or call handling. So we actually decreased our run response time since we implemented Westcom. We're actually, over the last year, we've seen a full minute decrease in, in response time, which is important on a bunch of levels, not only for the service, but also for ISO rating. So my experience with Westcom, although I would not want to go through the startup portion of Westcom again, because it was, that was really difficult. Since it's actually been implemented, it's been one of the single largest safety improvements we made for the, for the fire department. You know, I look at some of our bigger incidents of the Air Modus fire, they assigned four dispatchers to that. There's no way a single seat dispatcher could have managed that incident. We have large weather events will actually send somebody to the community to help us, you know, run our dispatch. We've gained a, from a capital perspective, so we've, from a cost savings perspective, we've lost the cost of all those dispatchers and the long-term OPAP costs for, for the dispatchers we had. So that's a, that's a, you know, annual savings, but certainly a long-term savings that you have to realize. For the capital expenses, we were, we, in our, in our five-year capital plan, we had a one point six million dollar radio system. Westcom bought it for us. And they're actually, we're going to phase two of that system now, will bunch, which will bump that to two point eight million dollars in value. Fire Department gained a hundred thousand dollar stationary alerting system. Both the police and the fire department gained lobby controls on our buildings. So for the safe havens and things like that. We've got, gained CAD capability, which we didn't have before. So a lot of technology that we simply didn't have before. So the other real benefit that we're seeing is the emergency medical dispatch. So it's not uncommon for us to arrive at a scene now, the dispatcher, the call thinker's still on the phone, providing pre-response, all the way up to coaching somebody through doing CPR. When you have a single-seat dispatcher, single dispatcher, they just simply don't have the time to do that because they've got to answer other calls. If, if you call and you have that serious, that, that person is dedicated to you, they'll, that handoff happens. So, so I honestly, I, I think it's working really good. I think financial needs benefit and I think there's a lot of opportunity to come with it, so.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Chief Dearborn? All right. Thank you very much.
That was easy, guys. Thank you.
That was a good budget.
And Sean.
Josh, can I, maybe you want to look at this section by section, like highways and streets and then.
I think that's a good idea. There's a lot of line items on this one.
Right.
You want to go ahead, Mark?
Sure. We want to start with highways and streets up.
Yeah, we'd be glad to do that.
I guess, Sean, when I, when I went through the budget, and Lynn explained a lot of this when she went through it with us, is the issues of streetlight, maintenance, streetlight, electricity and things like that. And I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement now that these numbers, as modified by the town manager, are reflective of what we're really gonna be at next year.
So they're, they're as reflective as we know at the time. So as you guys know, we've been reallocating our energy accounts to address the credits that we have. We're also in the middle of negotiations on one of our net metering agreements to cash it out as opposed to getting more credits. So some of this is going to be in flux a little bit while we get that settled. But we have looked back at the last five years of streetlight line items. And really, we can only get a count for really the last three years when we made the switch over from the high-pressure sodium to the LED. So we, we do believe that this is more closely capturing what the true cost is of the LED streetlights.
That's fine. I'm not gonna disagree with you. I just want to make sure that we're all, we are where we are.
They're with the net metering or factoring the credits as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, off the top.
I think the other issue was there's, I don't mind, mine's three twenty-four, but it was repair and maintenance, streetlights. I think that, you know, clearly people do call or I hope they go, go to the DPW website and report streetlights, but I think it's a lot less. And I suspect we still have or are gonna renew a contract if we haven't already for that done.
We recently renewed a contract and I think we might have not, they might not have been responsive prior. But we have a good amount of inventory in stock and I, I think we're doing fine in terms of the contract we have and those numbers as they, as we see them now.
We're still supposed to have a, I think, another year or so left on our warranty of the original LED lights, not for the labor, but for the lights themselves. So if you hear the lights failing, there is a warranty on it.
Good.
Sean, do you have the ability, if there's a light that's out, to be able to see, oh, this light's out on this street or?
Yes. Well, I don't know. I don't have the ability to see that, any sort of like data or.
Like technology or?
No, usually it's a call.
Okay.
And encourage anyone that has a light out to call. The only issue I've had is figuring out sometimes it's private lights versus public. So look them up. But we have a responsive contractor that's usually here within a week, so.
So with Chief Starks in the background here, I'm gonna put everybody on the, do we have some kind of working system that, you know, is, especially because now it's daylight savings time, you know, it gets dark late at night. Generally, the only people in town, my experience driving around, are police officers. Do they, if they see a light out, are they gonna be, do they have some simple, straightforward mechanism for reporting that to you folks? And where should we have that?
There's a standing order that's been in place forever. I, I tend to have to remind them every so often because I can remember as a junior officer, the last thing you wanted, your sergeant to hand you, it used to be a list and you'd have to go around and drive around every side street. So you got away from making the traffic stops and having the fun of just driving around with the routed lights. But yes, your answer to your question, we do have our officers on the midnight patrol looking for obvious lights that are out. And then we'll forward them to the DPW via new email system we have for work tickets, if you want.
I mean, citizens are pretty good at reporting the streetlights that are out.
Yeah.
We also have enforcement officers driving around.
Well, that's true.
So a hot topic in town. Is there any paving plans or?
Sure. So you guys get bothered with that a lot, I bet. And I've mentioned a few times, we have hired beta engineering to come up with a new pavement management software, which they recently completed, including the town parking lots. So we'll probably be having a preliminary look at that in the next couple of weeks. And that'll be enrolled to you guys in the next couple of months, month or two. Within that, we'll have a very formal and specific sort of layout for the five, ten-year plans. But there's a caveat to that, which is that we're simultaneously doing the water and sewer capital plan. And we need those to merge together to make sure we're not working against ourselves. So although we'll have a preliminary plan, some beta, which will have good numbers, we just need to make sure we're not working against ourselves with the water and sewer.
So we're not paving, then doing water?
And then going back over. Or like, so when I first started, we realized we had a series of roads that we were planning on paving and the water mains, we just had them break there. Too long ago, we're busting apart, I think the chief's street, actually. So not a good idea to pave them. So we are gonna tentatively, you know, merge those together, those, those plans, and hopefully as something that's sort of a living document we'll be able to look at during the course of the year pretty often.
I wasn't trying to jump on you about any particular street. I just, people ask, they want to know, so.
I can only imagine the amount of complaints you guys get. So no problem asking me.
Yeah.
Do we maintain that list or, you know, as best as we can on a website or something so we can point people to that?
So that's a very difficult thing to do, given the volatility of the asphalt market, which is based upon oil. So if you show a five-year plan and you have a fifty or sixty percent increase in the cost of oil or asphalt, that five-year plan becomes, you know, a seven, eight-year plan.
But do we at least show what we plan in the current fiscal year? I mean, when we get four hundred and eighty or four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in chapter ninety money and we put another four hundred thousand dollars in, I assume we have a plan for the summer, fall of twenty twenty-three, right?
We do have a rough list, but besides the volatility of the oil prices, there's volatility in the bidding market. So even going out beyond a few roads, we'd have to be really conservative in what we're saying we're gonna get done because it could be that we get thirty or forty percent less based upon our estimates today as what happens in July. So just want to throw that out there as a, as a risk. But we do have a working list and we often talk about it. It's just, but it's up for change.
Well, from, from my perspective, let me, I, I think the need ought to drive the system and not the cost. Now, unfortunately, we have costs, but, you know, we're sitting here tonight talking about a budget and capital planning. And if we say the cost of doing roads has gone up twenty percent and we still need to do, you know, we've got ten roads or fifteen roads in dire condition that need to be replaced, I think it behooves you to say, not to us, you know, the nine hundred thousand dollars isn't doing it this year, folks. And we got some real problem roads and we've got some real problem, you know, that have been waiting too long. And because we can, to some degree, make that adjustment. We probably ought to.
So I absolutely concur. And you should be careful what you wish for because I will be coming back. But I would not come to you and say, you have this need and I need all this money without a formal plan that I agreed with, without having the construction methodologies figured out perfectly, without making sure we're doing the upgrades to the stormwater, to the water and sewer. So I want to have that plan laid out there so you guys know exactly what you're getting for the money we're asking for, to the best we can guess.
But I think, Sean, it's worth you updating. And we used to have rules of thumb that, you know, it's so many dollars per mile of road to pave, so many dollars per, I think, a hundred yards of whatever we used of sidewalk to, to replace and what it, I, I, you know, those numbers. I, I, you know, those numbers have probably gone topsy-turvy in the last two years. But I think it's worth trying to generate those kind of guidelines and say, look, the, you know, we, we've identified, you know, 15 miles of roads, or 12 miles of roads, or whatever it is, and it, at the price, here's what it, you know, our rule of thumb is going to say to us.
So I agree with you, but those numbers could be off by as much as 100% of the estimate we have right now, just because, for the two reasons I mentioned prior. And without knowing the water and sewer, I don't want to start just paving. Because there's a good chance we'll be coming back through in three or four years to have to replace those. So again, I do think you're right, but we, I think we need to have a, a sort of global plan before we, I start asking for those kind of, that kind of money. We are, we are maintaining, to an extent, I think, a decent system. It definitely could get more money, because we've lost approximately 50% of the paving value in the last three years. So the price of asphalt's gone up by that much. But again, I don't want to ask you for money and start paving in front of a comprehensive capital plan that includes water, sewer, and stormwater.
Well, I guess that.
So if I could.
Go ahead.
So what you can anticipate is, in the next couple of months, when the beta pavement management plan is done, and the, DPW's had a chance to overlay the water and sewer work on top of that, and stormwater work, you will be given a presentation that shows you all of that, what you're asking for. And then we will need to have a conversation about how we're going to fund the work that's necessary, that they outline. So that all of the roads that are prioritized in, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, however they break it out, how do we pay for that? Because even the entire $2 million capital plan is not going to do it, so.
We said 25 million dollars won't do, I mean, don't do the.
Potentially, but, you know, that's, that's out of touch for most communities. So what we will do is we'll have some conversations about strategizing. There's other options out there. A lot of communities have come up with some creative ways to, to fund that work, and we'll bring that to you in a couple of months.
But the, the issue for me, Lynn, is that, A, we, we tend to, if not exactly, fund things one time of the year. Now, we can also do it in the fall, but more importantly, the, the repaving, road reclamation renovation season in New England is pretty short. And so, you know, to, to go say, well, we'll go get money at the November town meeting, doesn't do a lot of good when you got to let their, let that money just sit in the, in your pocket for five, six months, until you can pave again. And so since we're at the point where we're appropriating money for paving and whatever, you know, what do we have, you know, what are we appropriating our 450,000 dollars for in addition to the 490? And I don't even know what chapter 90 is. It's been about 490,000 dollars, give or take, for the last few, few years. And so the question, I guess, bigger question for me is, you know, are we, this is terrible expression, we're putting good money after bad by saying, here's 940,000 dollars, when we don't have a plan to spend 940,000 dollars? When we know that the 450,000 dollars that our capital planning committee has recommended to go for supplemental road repairs, you may not be ready to appropriate that yet, because we want to do this Beto's overlay with, with sewer and water. And so do we really want to appropriate that this year? Do we want to put that money towards something else, and then take that something else's money next spring, when you, we are ready to spend it?
So I looked through the plan that we had with engineering to make sure that the roads that are on the list for next year do not have the issues in terms of water, sewer, or stormwater. So that what we put forth, I can give you the list of roads that are preliminarily planned, that's not an issue. I made sure that those were not roads that we thought we had an issue with. But before we went forward with any more roads that required more design, we, we had to have a real comprehensive plan. It, it just, it's just essential, I think. Not only to make sure that we're doing things the right way, but also see if there's grants available for those roads we're planning, to make sure we're not working against ourselves for another road that's in three years, we want to pave, that we can get grant for. You know, there's, could be a road that this year we want to pave, but there's a probable complete streets grant we could get. So we can push that, that road aside and do a different road, and then grant fund it later. So I don't know if I'm making a lot of sense, but we, we need to have a plan. We, I absolutely think it's the, the right methodology. And we do have a plan, it's just not as comprehensive as it needs to be, and I don't want to work against ourselves.
Even if that plan for next year could be public or available, I think that's really useful.
That's the biggest thing we get is, where's, when's, my road is terrible, when is my road going to get paved? And where is it on the list? There are times that we've been able to say, there's a list on the website of 2023, 2021, whatever roads.
I can give you the list for next year's.
You can put all the caveats you want on there.
So yeah, sorry about the long-winded answer. We can give you next year's.
But that's not a problem. That's the kind of calls we get.
Right. And it all, that was a useful discussion, but yeah. Good. And then the other thing I hear about a lot, sidewalks. I think before you were here, there was a lot of cutting to cut out some of the bumps. Is, is there a comprehensive plan being put into place for sidewalk replacement?
Sure. So we have an in-house design, but similar to paving. Beta engineering is doing the sort of layout and new plan for the sidewalks, including updating our ADA transitions around town, which are not all compliant. So that's happening this spring. It's not going to be ready yet, but.
Is that process volatile?
It's not. It tends to be a bit easier to predict. They haven't fluctuated as much primarily because it's concrete, though there has been some increases. It hasn't been as bad as asphalt.
Just, just as a comment, the, the grinding of the, the high points in sidewalks, that came out of Paul Santinell, and I brought back from an MMA meeting years and years ago, as an opportunity to not have to replace sidewalks that were offset. And I can see that. It's been done a lot around town now, and it seems to work really well.
And it's great in short term. Is that in the long term? Does that make them more liable to crack, or?
It's, it's, doesn't make them, I mean, it's a short-term solution.
Yeah.
Because they're moving because of either a sub-basis compromised, or because of tree roots busting them up.
I had a sidewalk down the street from me that was probably this high, and it got cut down. And so now it's even, but I figured it's got to be about that thin. Okay, Tom?
Yeah, last time you were here, Sean, I've got to, thank you for, I saw some pothole repair going on, you know, in the, around the shops, and, and I, I know we talked about that once, and you, you said if you had the staff. And, and as I look at the budget, you know, your, your overtime budget predictions are pretty substantial. And I, I think that's, is that probably because you're short-staffed? Is that what you're thinking?
Depends on, I'm, depends which department you're talking about. Is it from highway, the overtime?
I guess I was looking at the, it might be the highway. Yes, it is. Yes. For overtime for the highway administration, yeah. And I mean, I don't know if that's, I think it, well, it's jumped, it was higher, it was high in '22. And then the '24 budget, again, seems up there. And I mean, is it just because of shortage of staff? Is that the main?
So, no, I believe those are.
It's more on-call time, off-hours, having the guys come in.
Okay.
So they get called for a tree down, that's overtime. There's a four-hour minimum. There has to be two individuals that come in from OSHA standards to deal with it. So those sort of things, dead deer in the road, all sorts of stuff.
Well, like, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, right?
Yeah, right. And on your discussion about staff issues, we have been, I think, doing much better in terms of filling staff. This summer was historic in terms of how low we were with staff. It was almost impossible to fill a pothole. I think we had pivoted, and we had the momentum going the other way. So I'm pretty optimistic that this summer we'll not, we'll not have the same issues.
Great.
Lynn, when's our wage study expected?
They just concluded DPW interviews. They're starting town-side interviews now, so a couple of months.
Just last, last time, one of the things that wasn't on the capital plan this year, I don't see, is guardrails. And, and I want, just want to make sure that it's on your thought process, because we have a lot of guardrails, and in many places there are the old wooden guardrails that, you know, they're not the stainless steel kind of ones that last forever, so.
Sure. So we.
I think you replaced some, didn't you? I know you were out of town for a couple of weeks, but towards the south end of town, right?
Summer done today.
Yeah.
So we, we have caught up to a great regard in terms of the, the guardrails. The ones that are needing replacement, we can always use a little bit of chapter 90 money to replace those guardrails if need be, or they can be done when we do the road over. So that's another thing, when you look at doing a road, you're doing the road as a system, all of it. And the guardrails at that time can be rolled into the capital project.
So it seems like guardrails that are on the, the inside of the sidewalk, not towards the street, but towards like wooded area, are, seem to be more wood ones. And is that, is there a code or something that addresses that, or?
There is code.
Okay.
Wood doesn't need code. But, um, you know, if you have an area with an old trend, there's a low chance of having a car hit it. I suppose it's okay, but generally speaking, you want federal standards to be met when you put guardrails up.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else on the streets, highways?
Could you just touch on the, the potholes just around town? I know Tom mentioned that as well, and Mark mentioned the roads as a whole. But you go up by Shaker Road, the south end on Long Meadow Street.
Sure.
And then just some of the, the manhole covers around. It's, it's pretty brutal.
Yeah, it's definitely bad. And we had, this time of year is pretty hard to do pothole filling, because the plants are cold. So we're using a little bit of cold mix, which doesn't last very long. But I think a lot of the issues we have stem from our inability in the summer and fall to get in front of those potholes and patch them. So we're seeing that now, the worst time of year when things start to buckle apart, with the end of winter and frost heaving. So hopefully with being fully staffed, we're able to get in front of those potholes more and do more. We just didn't have the manpower, person power last year to, to take care of it in a way that we really should have. But we are out, and we get work orders all the time, and in between storms, staff's out. They were out yesterday, so doing the best thing, yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
All right, is there anything else? We can move on to snow and ice removal?
It is what it is.
Yeah. What are you on track for this year?
They'll tell you tomorrow.
Yeah. I, I assume this year has been lower, or?
I, I think we, I don't think we'll expend our snow ice budget, but we don't have a, a really high number, because that's one of those lines you can overspend. But I, I think we'll, we'll give some back, hopefully.
Okay.
I think, I don't know if the rest of the board knows, but state law allows people to, that's the one line item we can overspend. And I think we've always budgeted, what, a hundred thousand dollars? Because that's the minimum that you have to.
We always have to budget an amount equal to or greater than you did the prior year.
Right. So we budget a hundred thousand dollars, and then the annual town meeting, or I guess, do a makeup out of free cash, but that's the way it goes.
I'm knocking wood for you.
Yeah.
It just, it sounds like it's still raining outside, I see. Anything on forestry?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm surprised that, you know, and I'll preface this by saying, I, this is a carryover from the October 2011, so now it's 13 years ago, or 12 years ago, storm when we lost a couple of thousand trees, I think, in town. And at the time, we said we were going to make a commitment to replant. And I know, you know, we, we tried to boost up the forestry budget a little bit. And we had a, you know, temporary tree warden, or tree warden, Dave Marinelli, who was pretty aggressive. But it, you know, Long Meadow takes a lot of pride in its trees. And I'm surprised that, that, you know, we aren't, it looks like we're dropping back down in our tree planting. And even though we're committing to a three-quarter time, or two-thirds time, or something tree warden, I was just wondering, because that's one of the things that interests me personally, that I'd like to see us not have, you know, cut back on, 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 on tree planting, and see if we can't bring that back up. The plantings, I thought we. Well, it's going up a little bit, actually, a couple thousand dollars. But, but from where it was in, you know, in 2020, 2021, it's come way down.
Oh, okay. So I, I can speak to that the current plan is, and I do think that that line has to be increased eventually. But we do have another consultant that is giving us a report about what needs, they think we need to spend in terms of getting rid of hazardous trees, and what we need to put into the town in terms of replacement. There's some, some suggestions in terms of what the budget should be. However, we have ARPA money that we're utilizing right now to take hazardous trees down. And I've been doing so pretty aggressively, specifically in the parks and in the schools, which the trees have not been looked at in a long time. So that has freed up some of the money we have in-house to do plantings this spring and this fall, hopefully. We have a contractor, under contract, to do plantings this spring, and we are ordering a substantial amount to go in. I don't have the exact number yet, but it'll be a lot. We have a three-year lag in terms of the amount of residents who have called or requested trees to get put in that we haven't followed through and planted. I absolutely intend to catch up. I think we can, we can put a significant chunk in that this spring and this fall, with existing funds. Probably because, because we have the ARPA money to help with some of the hazardous tree removal.
You may not be aware of this, Sean, or Lisa, because you're relatively new, but we, we have a, a system where people can fund trees for, and I don't know how many people actually do that anymore, but there was a period of time where, you know, we would get 15 or 20 people a year who would fund trees in, in certain places. And I think, you know, one of the things we ought to, and somebody calls and says, the tree in front of my house needs replacing. Well, you know, you can fund that if you'd like to have it done, and we've done that in the past. The other thing is that we went through a period of time, and it was many years ago, where apparently the town put in all the, what I'll call the wrong trees, or people call the, the wrong trees. And then Eversource came along 10 years later and, you know, cut them all off at the knees kind of thing. And so I, I assume you're aware, a new tree warden will be aware of, let's not spend our money on the wrong trees in the wrong places, because.
Yeah.
Eversource has, I think, priority over cutting down trees we put in.
We're trying to put the trees that grow up high underneath the power lines. But then, of course, you've got to worry about what's underneath, too. So it's a, the damage, get them, get them put in. The other issue we've had with tree plantings has been having staff to water them once they're in. The residents will sometimes water them, but they don't do a great job, and then the trees die, and we all, we all look bad. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can get a significant install in, get help from the homeowners, and also have some staff be able to go out and fill the bladders to make sure those trees survive.
So the tree warden has anticipated, it's 75% of somebody's week, right? Do you anticipate each week 30 hours on tree work, or is that, is it seasonal?
So no, actually, the trees are, you guys get a lot of calls about the roads. I get more calls about the trees than I do about the roads. But, um, so there's plenty of tree inspections to do. We also, it would be great to have the tree warden be able to go on-site whenever Eversource is doing some work and make sure none of it damaging our trees. To, when I have a capital project that's doing a, a major project like Long Meadow Street, to have the tree warden go and inspect, to take a look at pruning and preventative maintenance. There's definitely a need to have someone doing that, that many hours will be easily, I think, used. Plus, meeting with the homeowners, like I do that now, go to their house, talk with the trees. That sort of day-to-day interaction is, I think, really helpful for the department, and makes people feel like they're getting their, their money's worth out of the town. They call once every 10 years and it's for the tree, and then we don't cut it down, you know, they tend to be upset. But I do think there's plenty of work for the tree warden.
Great.
A call I get an awful lot from people is my neighbor's tree. So it's not a town tree. My neighbor's tree is hanging over my house, my yard, whatever, and they won't take it down. And I think we, at least I've developed an answer for them. I don't know if the town has in, in general, but.
Yes, we do. We get that call a lot.
Right. And, you know, how do, how do we make my neighbor take care of their tree? But very different from a town tree, which doesn't happen very often, has, has a problem. But I'm sure you get the town tree.
Is the answer even cut straight up from the property?
No.
That's legally the answer.
That's legal. And my answer is, is, you know, send a letter to your insurance company and, and that says, I've identified this, because their insurance company will, your insurance company will probably care, contact their insurance company and, and indicate that it's a hazard. And then when somebody gets a letter from their insurance company that says they have a hazardous tree, and they're not going to be covered if it falls on the neighbor's house, two or three times I've suggested that people have come back to me and said, it worked. So that insurance companies do a much better job.
Well, if only your neighbors like you.
You know, but, but a lot of people have trees like this, so even if you go like this, it's still. But, but the, you know, contacting insurance companies, from what I understand, seems to work.
Is that what the town says, too?
Same information, yeah. So that's good.
That sounds a lot more responsible. Good. Anything else on forestry?
So just a quick question about tree wardens. So the other third, you know, or, you know, 30% of that job is to be a conservation agent. So are we looking for someone that's a tree warden, that kind of like has an interest in kind of picking up the conservation agent? Or is there a significant overlap in those two?
I think they're, we're looking for someone that has multiple skill sets, I think.
LXO may be available.
What's that?
LXO may be available as a conservation. It's the last one.
All right, moving into grounds maintenance.
Sean, can you talk a little bit about how you anticipate the field grounds maintenance system working in this first year? I think in the, in the write-up that Lynn put, there was some discussion about outsourcing versus in-sourcing in a trial versus long-term. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So, and I think that the, the outsourcing, I think you're probably talking about Wolf Swamp Fields primarily. Fields primarily. We have bid that out and I believe are about to award a contract. So I can't say the name of them yet. But, um, so that would be a situation where they'll be doing the mowing. We'll be doing the, I think, if we can in-house, the line, like the field painting, anything we can do. We have another contractor that's going to open the, get the sprinklers online for the first year. But I think over time, we'll be taking over that as well. So really, I think in terms of this year's field masons, this year's field maintenance will be primarily the mowing that, that Wolf Swamp because there's a substantial amount of it. I think they're going to do the irrigation and some fertilizer as well. It's just, it was just a huge, huge project that we don't really know how much labor-intensive it is. So to try to have the department that's been understaffed take that over all at once, I think would be risky given the expenditures that the town has just put into that field.
So are they going to teach you how to maintain it and...
Yes, so we'll, we'll be able to know at the end of the year what we can take over and if we can take over those, those, those jobs.
Last thing we want to do is have those fall into disrepair.
Yes, yes. Yep, I agree.
But the Parks and Rec revolving fund that is proposed would provide funding, not necessarily for Wolf Swamp Field, but for field maintenance is the, you know, indication of that fund request, correct? So that in theory, there's an opportunity for continuing this based on whatever revenue we get from, from signs at the park.
It's a good selling point for the signs to people. And then, but overall, the school athletic fields funding, there's, it went up significantly and it came back down in the town manager's budget. Will you, will you be able to keep up? Or I know there's some work that is trying to be done to improve this year. Is that going to be a problem?
So I'll let Nick speak to the, what the incidence of that particular line are.
Sure. So we, based on how it was last year without Wolf Swamp, we'll be able to tread water with all the fields that we have right now. So the plan would be pretty much the same as what we were doing last year now that we have to bid out for Wolf Swamp Field Maintenance.
Okay. At the end of the year, Glenbrook, there was just some seed dumped on top of it and didn't take. It was like my lawn. But is there different practices that can be put into place that, so we're not just throwing seed away?
Yeah, so when it comes to Glenbrook, we're actually going to take that field down for the whole month of April. We're going to put a snow fence up, sign saying that nobody can walk on it. And we're going to hydroseed the entire field in hopes that we get some strong roots to take and have it in a better condition for the coming spring seasons.
Is April with hydroseeding, I did that 25 years ago, is that a good growing time?
It's cutting it close. But we're of the opinion that something right now is better than leaving it in the condition that it's currently in. So we're going to throw our hopes out there, plaster the field with seed and give it a time to rest and hopefully we get some good roots to Germany.
Cross my mouth. Knocking wood for you, that's great. Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Yeah, that was actually one of the concerns I had that Josh brought up as well was, I understand we're going to be doing some maintenance in the spring. Have we thought about pushing that to the fall where it's, you know, more advantageous to grow grass? Especially we have a lot of, I guess, field space issues as it is right now. And I'm sure we're going to hear more and more about that. So, you know, that's just one of the thoughts that I had, so I'd love to hear.
Yeah, it's something we want to stay on top of all season long. Because when it does go by the wayside, you end up with the conditions that we have at Glenbrook currently. So to answer your question, yes, we would want to do some maintenance and some reseeding in the fall as well, both growing seasons, spring and fall.
Does Glenbrook, does that have sprinklers?
It does.
And it's not, it's not working, is that?
It was offline, right? I think it was.
The controller is offline. So right now, we have the ability to turn the sprinklers on and turn them off manually. We don't have a timer set for it. We still have to install the variable frequency drive and the actual timer.
Is that part of the plan for this year?
Yes.
After hydroseed, okay.
And I want to pivot off what Nick is saying, just to, in the out-years, we're projecting reoccurring capital money to try to do a better job of maintaining these fields. I think that, and I'm going to keep harping, I'm sorry, I keep saying plan. When SLR finishes their plan, we'll have a better idea of what our fields are, what's being used the most and where we need to put our attention, as well as come up with plans on how to rotate usage around so we can, don't have these issues where all the fields are going down at once or they're not in condition to can play. I just think it's something that, that we can do a better job of. And hopefully when the report's done, we'll be able to, to really address this better.
I like to hear plan, as many times as you want to see it.
Okay.
And I, Pete Landon used to email me all the time about, we need to have a plan in place. And I, and so I'm glad to hear because can't have the fields, if we're spending money on it, got to keep it.
One of the issues, Josh, is that, that, you know, we don't have enough fields as it is. And so I think it's important that the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the School Department, be in, in on this. I mean, we all got a letter from somebody who's telling us there aren't enough fields and it's, you know, it's like telling something we already knew. But, but somehow, I agree that there's got to be a plan, but we've got to work it around. And ultimately, somebody's not going to get a field because it's better for the town to close a field for either a season or a month or something like that. And I think we, the more upfront we are about doing that, the better off we are because otherwise we're just going to, you know, use fields 11 months a year, nine months a year, whatever it is, and beat them to the ground.
Moving on to town building maintenance. Go ahead, Mark.
At some point, I think I was at the building committee meeting when we were talking about painting. And so one of the items you have is repairs and maintenance buildings. And we talked about the real, you know, painting is maintenance, not capital. And we had a lot of requests for capital kinds of things. How can we build up the budget for that, those line items? I can see that this year it went up $35,000, which is great. But, you know, we need to start moving maintenance into maintenance and out of capital because capital things are just getting too expensive. So the question is, do you have a plan? How do you do that?
So we're hoping to go out to bid and hopefully get a favorable price from a variety of vendors. And I think we're optimistic we'll be able to get quite a bit done for that money.
There's a painting line item, 457 too.
Right.
Forty just for that.
And we do have a good jumpstart using ARPA funding to tackle a big backlog, backlog of painting. And as you just said, it's also in the budget this year, which it hasn't historically been an operating expense.
So the intention is to keep that going forward?
Yeah.
I think that's very smart.
So, you know, back to, so we do have the money for landscaping in the operating budget as well. And I think that there'll have to be decisions made about the field maintenance going back, sorry, about whether those will be capital dollars to start to get the fields back into shape to maintain. I think that we've done a not-so-great job doing projects and then not funding the maintenance of them afterwards. So it's something that I'm keenly aware of.
When are you going out to bid for painting?
Well, we, I think we need to have it funded. So it would be July. We go out to bid earlier than that, but yeah, hopefully get it done when school's not in session.
So elevator repairs and HVAC services were also added this year. Why are those new items?
So HVAC repair and elevator service are both high-ticket expense items that we've been grappling with recently. We noticed that running our elevators has become quite expensive and differentiating between the maintenance on the elevators and the recurring expenses for monthly maintenance and inspections are something that we kind of want to capture more thoroughly.
They had been in the maintenance lines for either the schools or the town buildings.
So we're funding it more explicitly, okay.
Yeah.
And then HVAC services, is that separate from the air handlers or is that involve replacement?
It's the maintenance of the air handler. So once the air handler project is completed, that line item would take care of the maintenance for the air handlers.
Is that just for LHS?
No, we for townwide.
Okay, okay, understood, thank you. Any other questions on building maintenance?
Uh, yeah, actually I have one here. I wrote this one down here. So line item 453, can you explain the continued increase, which is fairly significant over the past few years? I've seen these buildings on tours and attended three of the schools in Long Meadow years ago, and clearly they need a lot of maintenance. It would, it would be helpful to highlight and understand common areas or trends around these maintenance supply needs.
Sure. So that line item captures a lot of things that we purchase in the facilities department. That's like our hardware account. So that's the nuts and bolts of everything that we purchase for all the town buildings. You'll see increases because the cost of everything has gone up, as well as we are more thoroughly staffed now, which means more work is being done. More work means you're consuming more of the nuts and bolts that we buy every day to tackle each task.
And I'll go with some of them are being charged more to the repair line versus the supply line. So we're trying to figure out how much is actually repairs versus things we're buying.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, and solid waste recycling. I just had a question about the leaf program, 477. That's gone up and down and I was just curious, what accounted for the dips from last year?
So when we contracted with Waste Management to do our curbside, I think it got rolled into that contract to also do the leaf collection where previously we had used our own staff and it's been changing. But, so we don't get charged anything extra for those collections. It's sort of built into the yearly price that it gets divided.
Okay. But there still is a request, it's just more than last year. Okay. Anything else? All right.
Go down to the enterprise.
All right, any questions on water or sewer?
I just liked, I guess Lisa's the head, the point person for this, but did you get any feedback on our sewer rate changes or more importantly, the quarterly billing?
So most people were happy to see their summers have a cap versus being unlimited. We did have a few concerns that they thought the cap should have been combined of their two summers if they weren't hitting the cap. We did have other residents say that they were happy with the new process. So it splits out their bill across the year.
This may be the, the only positive email I've ever gotten on this program. It was nice, I should have.
Should have at least shared it with the rest of us.
So, you know, I guess Lisa, the question is, what system do we have to make sure? Because I know it takes an intervention on your part twice a year to go in and out of the quarterly cap.
So I think when we set the rate, it's just put the full year in that you could set it so that the first two are, you know, the cap and then reset the rates so that the next two quarters don't have the cap. I, I keep a binder on all my stuff, so if I ever left, hopefully they look at my binder to see.
Don't leave. I mean, the other thing is, we had a lot of discussion, Tom, I know you did in the past, about Springfield Water Department and their capital project, projects and capital program and how that's going to affect our, our cost of water. Are we getting any better indication from them? You know, they, they were way up here and then they dropped, cut back on it and they... Do we know where they're headed with that? Because when you look at water rates and sewer rates, Long Meadow's still pretty reasonable compared to our surrounding communities.
So I don't have any inclination. I know they have many projects that are substantial that they're undertaking right now, but they haven't discussed any significant increases with me, not in the last year.
No, they gave us projections of what we think should be next year, but it didn't really have a capital increase with it.
Paul, you remember when they came in with that massive?
Yeah, I do remember that, Mark. Again, Lisa, as Lisa said, they did send the estimated amount for FY 2024. But normally they, they, they send additional information for future years. And yeah, so maybe they didn't send that this time? It would have gave us an indication, but apparently they did not. The only thing they did send us an extra, I don't want to say an invoice, but some extra ideas of what the debt service was. But again, when, I think it was for a few years, is the crossing, the pipe going across the river and their new, that Bernie Avenue pumping station? We do have about a $24,000, that's, our portion is about $24,000 for that, for that project for FY 24.
So they're charging us, in addition to the per-unit price, there's a...
Right, because we're going to be using, we're going to be using that, that asset. So we obviously have to pay for...
So is that going to be built into our water?
It's actually going to be built in, into the sewer.
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, I have an updated version, but the water should go back to 1.5 billion and the 24,000 should be in the sewer department. I don't know if you have that on, on the, on the sheets that you...
Yeah, I've got utility Springfield purchased the water, right?
Is it 1.5 or is it 1.524?
Mine's 1.524.
Okay, so there, there should be an update. There would be a 24,000 decrease in water and a 24,000 increase in sewer.
Okay.
You'll get the new updated budget for your March 20th meeting.
Right, good. That's, that's fine, I mean...
Yeah, that is just...
But they're enterprise, I mean, so you, you work it into the...
Yeah, exactly. Right, right. Once this is all settled, work with Lisa, we'll come up with a rate proposal for you.
And, and this is based on prior year volumes, projected volumes, the combination of, because water and sewer are both volume-based, right?
These, these are what they sent us and I imagine it has to be the...
It was an average of our last, like, I want to say five years.
Okay.
There's just a couple of line items here. 648 GIS Services and 653 GPS Administration. You know, what's GIS?
So we have a consultant time bond that takes all of our mapping, all like the mapping of outfalls, some of the sewer lines, and they put it into this sort of interactive picture that we can pull up from. You'll see it when we do the pavement management plan, that it's, it's how everything's being mapped now and saved. So there's continuity in all of our infrastructure and it's saved in this, this GIS program.
Okay, so it's a graphic?
Yeah.
Mapping of the pipes.
I use it all the time and it's incredible how much information's on there.
Oh, yeah.
It's stuff I don't even know of yet. It's amazing.
It's, it's really important to get everything we can in that GIS database.
It has like flow direction in the pipes and things like that.
Conditions, we can, we can zoom in and get video of what's inside a sewer line and see if it's clogged. So when you go to town meeting and say we need a new line, you can put a, pull it up and say this is why. It's very, very helpful.
Got a question about something that comes up when people move to town and they get that water notification email. Is there, or a letter? I know it doesn't, it's fine. But is there ever, does Springfield ever intend on covering that? And is it, would that be a capital improvement that they would need to do?
You talking about the THMs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the part of the upgrades they're doing now at their plant are to help lower the THMs. But for the most part, when you have a lot of organic material, you've got to put chlorine into it to get through the whole system. So what we get with those hits of THMs are the interaction, a byproduct of the organic material interacting with chlorine. So the faster the water goes through and the cleaner their lines are, the less THMs. So the upgrades their lines should help. And we're going to be putting a filter into our tank to help reduce THMs as well.
Speaking of our tank, when we toured, you kept saying that there was a long-term plan for some major capital improvements of the water system in Long Meadow. Is that moving forward and at what pace is it moving forward?
So, so back to the planning. So Time Bond is working on our water and wastewater capital plan. They're the same company that does the GIS. So we'll be overlaying our stormwater, wastewater and water lines into that. And then be laying out the, the sides of the pipes, the conditions, both water and wastewater. And then we can take a look and say, where are our water main breaks? Where are sewer breaks? How does this fit in with our, our paving projects? They'll be probably completing that this summer and they'll be coming in to show you guys what they've come up with. With that will be dollar figures attached to those. And, you know, you'll have to take a look at what the priority is in terms of getting in terms of getting them done and how much you want to spend because there obviously will be a rate impact.
And you're looking at like this summer, this fall?
Oh, we're under, we're doing it right now. We're under contract with them, hoping they'll complete it this, this summer or fall. We also have a grant to the stormwater, so that's happening the same as that time.
Move on to stormwater.
Yeah, I put them together, yeah, a few more, anything in stormwater.
I guess my question about stormwater has to do with the, again, long-term capital requirements and how that's going to impact our budget as we move more and more allocated toward the stormwater utility program. Stormwater utility fee and utility separate from what I'll call the operating budget. Because one of the things that we've done is dramatically over the last three years increased our stormwater fees. And just wondering where that looks like it's moving going forward. I know we said, were we, well, we're three years, three years into?
We're three or four years, but we're, I think FY 24 is proposed to be like 54% refunded by, by fees. Actually, it's going to turn out to be a fairly substantial increase from FY 23 to FY 24 because of two reasons. One is the gradual increase of more and more having the fee pick up of the total, but also because of the budget increase that is there, you're going to get a compounding effect of those two. Where I believe it's almost, it's almost like a 25% increase. It's going to be towards those fees. The amount of revenue is going to, the amount of revenue from the stormwater fees will go up, estimated to go up 25%.
Just had a question on the street cleaning. So I know that went up quite a bit and we've had a lot of discussion here about the stormwater permitting. Is that, do we, is that going to be a staffing problem having a run or?
So we have the, two things. We have not been historically sweeping enough to be compliant with our MS4 permit, which you're aware of. And we have not been able to get the parts for our sweeper in a timely manner because there's a lot of moving parts. So we go down three months to whack. I have a contractor under contract to sweep as much as we need and that'll be done in conjunction with staff sweeping. So we'll start this spring as soon as the weather melts. And should we not be able to do all in-house, we'll have someone come in in the back end and sort of finish up. But that funding should do the sweeping to make us compliant.
Okay, I've been here five years, I've always seen the street sweeper.
It's been a while, yeah.
Mark?
One of, this is more generalization, but it's been a while since we last did a, an evaluation of how we allocate your salary, your salary across the multiple departments. That's one of the things I, I'd asked Paul about this year and, you know, we've been pretty steady. I guess the question is, are you aware of those percent allocations? And, and how do they, you know, line up with what we? And clearly a lot of it is arbitrary, but I think it was pretty extensive when we did it last time. In terms, what are we doing, one month or two months or three months? Where people track their time on different departments?
I think we almost did it over a year to take the seasonal variation out of it. And we had the, the laborers, you know, allocate their time like every Wednesday for, for one year. And that's how some of those allocations were determined.
Yeah, probably good to do a, do a look back at it. I know I don't think about my time.
I've looked at them a little bit. Our administrative wise aren't that bad. I sort of think they're accurate. Maybe our laborers I would consider relooking at. We have like 9% going to recycle center, which most of them probably don't go into there that often.
Again, this is only because of my concern about we're moving things out of tax-based into fee-based and, and I don't know that it's, it's appropriate or not, just so you know enough. So if you look at the budget, Sean's salary and Lisa's salary and we've got, you know, are basically split between roads and highways and building maintenance and grounds maintenance and water and sewer and all that kind of stuff. And it's a, and it's a fixed percentage. And as more and more of their salary goes toward our enterprise funds, water, sewer, stormwater, less of it comes out of, out of the tax base and more into fee base, but only in my opinion if it's appropriate to do that. And you never know what the, what the appropriate amount is. But, you know, I know I've looked at it this year and, you know, it's the same as last year. And yet we're moving other, you know, a lot of, changing a lot of things along with our, our staffing. And I'm just wondering if we ought not take a look at that. And I'm not saying which way for it to go because I don't know, I think it just needs to be appropriate.
I definitely think it's a good idea. I know that the department, at least the way I like to, to run it, we have a lot of overlap and everyone talks to everybody about all the projects, so it's not so, so segmented as it was because the more minds you have, the better. I know that Vinnie sits in the, the operations manager on all the water meetings because he used to work in the ditch fixing them, so he knows where they are. So I definitely think it's good, be a good idea to take a look and just, just see how much time we're putting into those, those other enterprise funds. If maybe not as much as we think, but we should take a look.
You know, I think, will you copy on the, let's say something more. So, yeah, just we're, I've tried to put those together from the budget. It just looks, I think it's, it's appropriate to redo those every so often. And I don't know if we should have a policy, we'll do them every four or five years, some kind of thing, but I think we need to.
I think that's, anything else for DPW? Thank you all three for coming in. Appreciate your time. Hi, Paul, you're up.
Fire away.
So I, I did some educating myself on SV, Silicon Valley Bank collapsing this week. And so my question is, are we only being benefited by the interest rates? Or is there anything that affects us with interest rates going up in a short-term way beyond? Or go ahead.
Again, as you know, we are earning a lot more interest currently, so in that fact we are benefiting. But at the same time, we will be going out and issuing short-term bond anticipation notes in May for about five different projects. There's, and they go through all funds, you know, there's, I think, you know, one in sewer, two in water, one in stormwater and at least two in the general fund with the feasibility study. So in that regard, it's going to hurt us a little bit, but I don't think it's to the same impact as, as far as with the interest revenue that we received. So we'll, we will come out ahead of the game as the interest rates rise because we do have a pretty steady cash flow and a pretty hefty reserve amount. So right now, again, I think we're ahead of the game.
Right here.
Josh, I thought you were going to say something about we take all this effort to make sure we don't exceed our insurance amount in every bank and all of a sudden Monday they came out and said, ah, we'll insure you the $14 million or however much these people have in these banks, so.
I'm not sure we get covered, but.
Well, no, that's what I thought you were going to say. But I think our policy is still a better policy.
Our policy is insured or secured. One way or another, they have to have some type of collateralization or be fully insured with FDIC or DIF insurance.
I didn't go that dark with my thoughts, Mark. Anybody else for Paul? All right. Easy peasy.
Good.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the draft annual town meeting more.
So I thought this was going to be on the next meeting.
We're voting on it next meeting. We're discussing if we want to change anything.
I was, unless I understood it differently, I was under the impression that it was just to circulate a new copy of the draft and then we would still have further discussions at the next meeting just so that you guys had the most up-to-date copy as well as anyone who views the meetings or residents of the town have a copy, the latest edition. And that's usually how we circulate, is, is through the agenda, so.
Right, and just so because we talked about it last time, I believe, 29 and 30 are just the ones that still stick out to me because 29 is removing a section, I think we can do it both in one section.
Oh, you mean in the same?
So Article 29 would say to discontinue Article 4 and to adopt Article and to adopt changes in Article 5, which incorporate Article 4. I just thought if I brought that up tonight, it would maybe straighten out next week.
You're saying 29 and 30, Josh?
Right, on the newest draft. It's sounder somewhere, nervous. Page 14. 14, out of 29 pages. Oh, yeah, it makes sense to circulate it this way. If anyone else wants to discuss it, I just, I took a glance through it today and that jumped out in me again.
I had a bunch of comments that I just wanted to make mostly about the comments and not the articles themselves, but on Article 10, which is the appropriation of fund for diff funding. I think it, my comment is that I would like to see the comment include the amount of the taxes that exceed the sum of the debt in our East Long Meadow payments. And, and the reason is that when we entered into the diff agreement with, with East Long Meadow, there was this comment that said, you know, all the revenue is going to, all the tax revenue is going to pay for the cost of the bond bonding and some payment to East Long Meadow. But I think what we're seeing, and I don't know that for sure, is that there's now a net revenue to the town for that. And I think it might be of, of interest for that to say, to see that in the explanation. Because it says the total estimated taxes due are $205,000. But, and I'm not sure what it means resulting in an increase of $24,225,000.
That's a typo, it should be 22, $24,225,000. That's what throws the whole thing off because that's, that's the difference between 205 and 175.
Uh huh.
Yep. When I first read that, my eyes sort of.
I didn't get that.
And Mark, I actually was working on those numbers this afternoon. The, the 21 Dwight Rowe is being taxed or being assessed right now at about $10.5 million. The tax bill is $244,000. Above and beyond that, we get $20,000 in the town of East Long Meadow. So, you know, you have $264,000 coming in in revenue. You have a debt service of 175, so that brings it back down, you know, a net of 90. But then if you subtract out the original, which is the number I can't exactly put my hand on, but the original, it was originally taxed at X amount. And I believe that X amount was 25 or $30,000. So, I mean, net to the general fund, you're coming in as excess of $60,000 for FY 23. Follow that.
I, I follow it and I think that's important.
Yeah, I actually just, I literally just looked up that information.
It's interesting, you have those numbers off the top of your head.
All right, so for other members of the board who weren't on it, you know, the developer came to us. We didn't even realize there was so much land over there. And they said, we will develop this if you guys fix the streets because those intersections, you know, it was ineffective, very ineffective. So, you know, we invested in, in that, we did a bond on it. And so now the building's worth quite a bit of money, 25 billion. And there's another additional building lot next door to that. And if they ever, and that other lot is all in Long Meadow. So if they ever develop that, we would do well. And, you know, so it's, it's worked out well for us and, and Long Meadow worked out well.
On the other hand, if they put a warehouse in East Long Meadow, all our good work goes for not because the traffic goes.
All the traffic, yeah, I know it, yeah. But we have, you know, that's, that's an area that we, that I drive through a lot. And at first it was worse, but now it's so good.
They had the extra lanes, right? Wasn't it one each way?
Yeah, right where Converse and Dwight come together and it was, you had one line, one side would always back up tremendously and now the way they have the lights set up, everything is, we're good. There's one flaw, but, you know. Paul, Paul, what was our interest rate when we took out this?
Oh, you're probably talking three and a half, somewhere.
So that's an example, we wouldn't be able to get that now.
No, no, you're not going to get that now. It was, you know, it was, obviously the interest rates were low until last year or so. It's been very low for, you know, the five, six, seven years before then.
So the same, if we went in and tried to do the same thing now, we might not come out ahead. A real closer call.
Right, I mean, the only thing that worked to our advantage is, you know, again, that, originally that, that facility was estimated to be about an $8 million project. So the assessed value, as I said, is, is over 10 million now. So in that regard, the assessment helped us.
I had a, oh, sorry. Thanks, I had a couple, just minor, more grammar related, but Article 5, just, just after Greenwood Pool. It says to thee or take any action. So I'm not sure.
Which article is that, I'm sorry?
Five, after Greenwood Pool. To add, yeah, to add a pool liner to the Greenwood Pool, it says comma to thee or?
Yeah, it was just.
The article fighters have seen.
Yeah, deleted a sentence that I forgot to take out the two though, so yeah.
And then I had another one on Article 12. I think it was line four, it says contact instead of contract.
Yep.
The one I'm looking at.
I thought that was contract.
The build contract.
What I'm seeing says contract.
Yeah, the other one you said is also fixed. I wonder if you're looking at. What should it say, building contract or a buying contract, what is it?
That's, okay, I might be, have a different version.
It says contact on line two.
Mine says contract.
Like the first sentence of the comment?
Under explanation? The italicized language?
Oh, but at the end of that is contact. It starts with contract, but then later on it's contact at the end of that line.
Oh, right, although we will be under contact. Right, that's where it should say contract.
Good job.
There's also one further down there that I sent.
The ones that you sent me made the way to this.
I think the word changes, we can just send over to Mike after. It'd be easier if we keep track of it too.
One, longer on Article 12, I'd send a note to, to Chief Dearborn today on Article 12 and 13. I think it might be useful in the explanation to say something like, at the time these are delivered, the ambulance or the fire truck will be X number of years old or will replace. And, because we're asking people to fund the replacement of a fire engine, so let's take 13. It seems to me that if we're asking people to fund the replacement of a fire engine, it ought to say, at the time this fire engine is replaced, it'll be 21 years old and it'll, you know, it's, it's engine number one or whatever it is he gave us tonight. Otherwise, people are going to say, we're just being asked to fund something that, you know, they're going to want more details on, I think.
Is it, is it better to say currently or will replace a fire engine that is currently X years old? As opposed to trying to project when that vehicle is going to come in?
Personally, I think because we're saying, don't worry, we're not going to be really getting one for three years.
You want to add three years?
I think it's, it says when this vehicle comes in. It's also easier to justify replacing a 21-year-old fire engine than an 18-year-old fire engine.
I would think people will be able to do that in their head, but that's fine.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that.
I'm forgetting, we're just getting a description of what a jet truck is, right?
Yep, DPW is doing that.
The other thing, I, I wrote this in and I don't know, I'm trying, it's fine. It says, and I'm just, again, going to do the 13, which is the fire truck. It says the purpose, purpose of the article is to allow the fire truck to, the fire department to order and enter into a. It says the purpose of the article is to allow the fire truck to, the fire department to order and enter into a building, a build contract. Somewhere, should we be saying it's our intent? It says, although we'll be under contract, vehicle ordered, we do not pay for the vehicle until it's delivered. It says, it's anticipated that when the vehicle finally arrives, the fire truck fund will have sufficient funds to pay for the fire truck. Should we then say something like, it's our intent that, that we will rescind this?
It does say that, if you scroll down a little bit, the intention would be to appropriate the funding from the fire truck and rescind this request.
Oh, okay.
Due to having the funding available from the fire truck fund.
I might cut off a question, too, that I asked, which is, if we order now, it locks in the price.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I know, but we can, we might want to insert that.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I think that's a good point, because I think people will question that.
Well, will the fire chief present, do any kind of presentation on this, or?
Yes, this is one that we're also, we've instructed departments to get ready for the educational videos that we've launched in the last couple of years. And this is one that will need a video.
Yeah, because that'll answer most people's questions.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right. What we found, Lynn, and as you know, is sometimes when you're rolling the town meeting, the PowerPoint presentation just takes up time that people don't need, and people just.
Yeah, these are the videos that we've been launching, like, weeks in advance of the meeting.
That's really, you know.
Yeah, I don't think he's intending to do a PowerPoint at that meeting, just be answering questions.
The other, Article fourteen is the sewer jet.
We'll have a video for that one, too.
But somebody's gonna ask, and I know we're gonna put a description there. I think we need to put into the description, what's wrong with the current sewer jet, how frequently we use it, or whatever it is. Because five-hundred thousand dollars is a lot, people just, I'm just thinking that.
So the questions I have out to them right now are, how many hours are on the current one, what year is it, replacement parts? And what's the lead time for getting it?
Do they contract that out right now?
No, we have two staff who are assigned to that truck.
Okay, I saw, I saw one out, and I thought it's.
It's ours.
I didn't realize it was ours, wow.
It's a big truck.
It's a heavy machine.
Yep.
And for Article seventeen, which is the community preservation funding of the playgrounds, should the, the comment also say that this is partial funding and additional funding is coming from capital stabilization or ARPA?
Sure, we can add that.
I just think that we ought to fully disclose how much the playgrounds are.
I'll have to check with Jesse. I think we're allowed to, I don't know if we're allowed to change those.
No, no, I'm not changing the, so we're, I'm changing the explanation.
Okay.
Any else?
I have one more on Article twenty-three, so the last two sentences. I thought it would make, it says, "this initiative was approved at the five, sixteen, twenty-one annual town meeting. This article provides clarity to where funds are distributed and expended." I thought that would be more in the description section, but maybe it makes sense to keep it there.
Yeah, you're right.
Should that be in the description?
Yep.
All right.
The article that I wanted to add is a, we have, we have stabilization funds. And what they have available are what are known as stabilization funds with dedicated revenues. So I guess my proposal would be that we create a stabilization fund for the opioid money that's coming in. That all that money that is gonna come in, it's gonna go right into the stabilization fund, and it would have to be appropriated out afterwards. Because what's gonna happen now is, being in the general fund, it has a lifetime of only till June thirtieth of the year, or else has to be committed. And technically, it's gonna be closed out, it's gonna go into the town's free cash. And if we start co-mingling, maybe minimally, we're gonna have to then take it out of free cash and re-appropriate it back to opioid uses. So if all the money just goes into the stabilization fund, we can actually prepare a budget that would match up whatever he wants to do within the fiscal year. And if there's excess revenues that come in in the year, they're just gonna remain within that stabilization fund until at some point in time that they're appropriated afterwards. And the only downfall is, it's a two-thirds vote to get out of the stabilization. I mean, I don't foresee that as a problematic type of, type of, you know, challenge.
Especially when we say this is what kind of it has to be used for.
Right, 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 this is what it could be used for. I mean, we're gonna have to, you know, as much as we're creating the budget for it now, we're gonna have to create a budget for it, you know, later on also. But instead of us having to guess what all these revenues are, because, again, I think maybe about two months ago, we got a notification of about four other revenue sources for opioid money. Like I said, it was CVS, it was, you know, a lot of the big drug convenience stores, if you wanna call me, shouldn't say that, but, you know, the big pharmacy type. So I imagine there might be more coming down the road, and I think this would just be a lot easier for us to track it, all going into that one fund, and then us being able to pull it out whenever we need it.
It's a good idea, especially, see, it sounds like Finn is, he's got ideas, but there's a lot of money, especially.
There's a lot of money, right. And, you know, and what could happen is, we wouldn't be able to appropriate the money unless we had it in there. So for FY twenty, for FY twenty-four, what we could do is, we could, you know, in essence, we would encumber the FY twenty-three money that he still had. And we could have him do that, and he would still be able to utilize the FY twenty-three money. The money would start rolling in in FY twenty-four, and if we, we're at the point of the fall town meeting that we had money in that account, and he knew that he needed X amount of money, we could go to the fall town meeting to set that budget.
It's a two-thirds vote, right?
It's a two-thirds vote to get the money out. You know, it's only a majority vote to, to create the fund.
Is there a constraint, a legal constraint, that that money can't only be used for?
Yes.
Okay, so, so without a stabilization fund or an enterprise fund, as I would call it, for, for the opioid money, if we didn't do that, the opioid money would then go into free cash, and how would we track it?
Right, we'd have to track out what we closed out, the amount of money that came in. It would be a whole separate cost accounting system almost, set up for that one revenue. You know, technically, what, you know, what we thought the legislature was gonna do is set up a special revenue fund. But it has yet to be approved, which would have taken care of, you know, it would have been in a grant fund, it would have went in there, would have come out of there, you know, no problem. Everything would have been satisfied, but they have not done that yet. So I know a number of other communities are going to stabilization fund route in order to, you know, just a dedicated revenue source. All the revenue for opioid judgments are gonna go in there. I mean, it's just, it seems like it's a little simpler process to do it that fashion.
So generally, when we have a stabilization fund, we also, you set up the fund, we also set up its allowable uses.
And you would do that also.
Okay.
The language of it has to identify the source and the use when it's originally set up.
Yeah, just, I'd like to support that. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Because there are also, could be families in town that lost a child or something to overdose. And if they, it would be helpful for them to know that this was in a stable money, that this fund is not gonna just disappear and sort of, you know, be out there somewhere accessible, but not really like in a stabilization fund. I think it's a good idea.
I guess, unfortunately, the Department of Revenue defines this as general fund revenue. You know, where you can get very easily co-mingled, but, I mean, there is specifically a purpose that it's to be used for, and it should be followed.
If we waded into that at the fall town meeting, could we take that FY twenty-four money and put it into that stabilization fund?
Yes, we could, we could, we'd have another transfer of funds. We would have to actually have the funds in place. I mean, if we're gonna set up this budget, we're gonna set up, what, another hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars? You know, we would have to take, and let's say only sixty thousand dollars came in at that time. We would only be able to appropriate sixty thousand, and then in essence, we'd have to rescind the other, you know, seventy-something thousand dollars. I mean, for, I think for us, it would be cleaner, or for the accounting office, it would be cleaner to do it July first.
Well, how do, how do we handle the cigarette money? We didn't have a stabilization fund for that, but it was.
The tobacco money?
The tobacco money, right.
That, that came in, it was, that came in as grant money. It came in as tobacco grant money, so it was, it was already set up as a, kind of as a special revenue. Whereas this, the Department of Revenue has defined it that this is a general fund revenue, and it must be taken in and appropriated out, out of the general fund unless there's some other means.
Well, I mean, I, I don't wanna throw cold water on this idea, but, but, you know, for example, our casino mitigation money is general revenue money, right? And that's going into general revenue.
Right, the three-hundred thousand that we get annually.
Right.
That goes into the general fund.
General fund, right. So, I mean, is, you know, the downside of this going into general revenue is only that you'd have to account for it separately because it's restricted in use? I mean, how can the DOR tell us it's general revenue fund when it's not general revenue uses?
I honestly don't know how they're gonna track it. You know, because they're, they're not gonna know how much we're expending, how much we're not expending, and how much is moving forward. So I don't know how much they're going to be able to track it. You know, the only thing that I can think of is if they give a direction to the independent auditor who comes in to follow the, follow the money type of thing, and, and, you know, be in your management letter. I mean, that would be the only thing that I could think of. The Department of Revenue is not gonna come in and do an audit of those.
Does the three-hundred we get every year from casino mitigation, does that get spent?
So it goes into the general fund revenues and it gets spent, you know, tactically for police and fire departments and personnel.
To me, that's the difference, we're not gonna spend all the opioid money every year.
Right.
So it's gonna create difficulties, an extra step every year, which I think is the difference.
I think the other issue, too, right, with casino or MGM, we're getting two-point-five percent each year. So it's, we understand what that number's gonna be with the opioid, we don't, we don't know, right? With some of these settlements.
Well, you know, they've given us projections of these court cases. There's about, like I said, there's six or seven different sources. The question is, how many more are coming down the road? You know, so we could put up a master schedule of all this revenue. But like I said, there's at least six or seven different court cases that have, that have, the sources of revenue are six or seven different, if you wanna call them defendants or claim, like, defendants.
I guess my concern with the stabilization fund is the inflexibility in allowing them to spend out of it. Whereas the special revenue gives them a little bit more.
I think the only difference is town meeting is involved.
Right, and that, I mean, twice a year, I don't know, I'm just thinking of, one of the advantages of being in a shared district is we do have potentially cooperative buying power. So all those communities got opioid money, too. If they come up with some great idea, and we can buy, you know, X number of whatever that's divvied out before, between the four communities, but we have to wait till town meeting. I don't know, I'm brainstorming here, but I don't, I like to have more flexibility than less, but.
I understand that, but at the same time, Lynn, we're only gonna be able, if you're gonna brainstorm, they can only brainstorm the amount of money that they have appropriated. So whether the source is doing it through the general fund, or we wait, I mean, it would take a one-year time to catch up. But once we have a one-year time of catching up, we're gonna appropriate it anyway. So the appropriation is gonna be, I don't say relatively the same.
Right.
But it should be relatively the same. It's just that one year, you have to wait till the money actually comes in before you can appropriate it, whereas now we can appropriate it based on the anticipated revenue.
The hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars is the, is the first-year significant difference from what we're gonna get in subsequent years also.
Ooh, I'd have to go back and really look at.
Well, first of all, that was two years' worth.
It is based on the current settlement that we know. So that's the one that we have already mapped out till twenty-thirty-eight or something. But we don't know what the Walgreens, CVS, Teva, and there was another company. We don't know what those settlement amounts are yet.
It could be theoretically higher.
And then you said the Commonwealth is creating a reserve fund to house this money? Oh, they're not going to?
No, we were hoping that the, that the legislature would pass some type of special revenue fund.
Right.
That instead of a stabilization fund, it would have done the, I would say the exact same thing. If it was a special revenue fund, the money just would have went in there, and you would have been able to expend it without an appropriation at town meeting. What the stabilization fund does is, you have to go to town meeting to expend it.
That's what they did for the tobacco settlement.
Right, right, exactly. It would have eliminated that step, but that is not in place at this point in time.
The downside by waiting is we have to, till November, is we have to wait to see.
Well, again, we would bring forward the twenty-three money, which, again, I don't know exactly what he's expended. And then when we went to the town meeting, we would be able to appropriate further whatever monies we received, you know, up until maybe the month before town meeting.
And Lynn, what's the constraint on appropriating money out of this stabilization fund? Can it be appropriated for, you know, every year, appropriate fifty thousand, just move it, if you will, out of this, this stabilization fund into the kind of, you know, a bucket of that money into the fund that, that's our multi-town health services? So they can spend it as they need to, or when we appropriate it, we have to be very specific when we appropriate it out?
I don't think, Mark, I don't think it's going into the, I don't think it's gonna be co-mingled with that other grant.
No, no, but my point is, Paul, that you said that, that, you know, in order to get money out of a stabilization fund, it takes a two-thirds vote. Does, do we have to vote on two, you know, spending, you know, X dollars to do a certain thing? Or can we say X dollars for services in our healthcare program?
I would think it would be generic enough that it would be, you know, you could, you just use the language that, you know, came with the, you know, came in with the money, it's gonna be used towards opioid, you know, abuse prevention, and so on and so forth. I think it could be that generic, and not have to get into X amount for salaries, X amount for this expenditure, X amount for that expenditure. I think you could do it in one lump, and have it a kind of a broader scope.
That's what I was thinking, Lynn, is, you know, that if we're gonna have some unknown amount, but a hundred thousand dollars or so, you know, it's not likely that, that our health department would use it all in one year. So we just appropriate a chunk of it, what they projected for the coming year as part of our, our fiscal budget program. Or, you know, as part of our annual town meeting warrant, we'd say, plus, we're gonna take a certain amount of money out of this, this, what are you gonna call it, opioid stabilization fund, to put it into that for healthcare.
Right, you would just have another vote as part of the whole budget. Like, if you have to vote the DIF, you would pick another vote, another central warrant article.
Well, the thing, I, the reason I see this a little different, it's, so like, if we took the money we got from the casinos, and we put it into a fund like this, right, we'd probably be spending more money to help people with gambling addictions. And I don't think we spent much on that at all. I think it's been on the police and the fire and roads and all those sort of things. Because it was based on, when we made the original argument with them, this is what we needed, you know, for a settlement. This money is gonna, you know, hopefully, it's gonna go to really help families who have suffered from the loss of a loved one, you know, due to opioid addiction. It's gonna go with programs to, for prevention. And I just think we should keep it separate, and I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't want, it would be easier for the, the health department who's facilitating these funds to know exactly where it is, how much it is, what kind of programs, even if they have to wait a little longer. You know, I, I hear, Lynn, you know, it, it may kind of hinder some of the projects you could do where you say, okay, you know, here's this program. You know, six communities are gonna contribute to this, and then it'll run in each community. You know, I can see that, it's nice to have flexibility for that, but, you know, we still may be able to do that anyways. And, you know, if he submits a budget, everything he submits should be able to get funded from this stabilization fund every year. If something new comes up, he might have to wait, but, I don't know, I just, I see it different just because we're dealing with families that have suffered losses. And, you know, it was just, you know, we're dealing with a post epidemic, you know, sort of response. Well, hopefully, post epidemic, you know, hopefully, there's not as many people dying now as there was. But we look into other stuff, like, you know, I was talking to someone. to someone the other day, how marijuana, you know, so dealers would lace it with fentanyl, so then kids would get addicted to opiates, you know, and that's some scary stuff, you know, to think how vulnerable our young people are, and so, funds that would address that issue, I, you know, I, I just, I wouldn't want anyone to be, to say, well, maybe some of that money was spent on something else, you know, this would make it clear, all that money was spent on, you know, prevention programs and, and support programs for families that served loss and so forth.
Tom, I, I don't think we're allowed to spend it on something else. I think, the question for me is, you know, how do we make it so that Finn McCool and our, and our health department's professionals have the flexibility to spend what they need as they see it, when they see it, as opposed to, you know, if you didn't anticipate it before the town meeting, you got to wait another six months or a year? And so I was looking for a method of saying, can we take some, make some of this money available in a more, you know, move it out of a stabilization fund more generically, so that the professionals in our healthcare department, health department, can spend it, as I said, when they need it, as they need it, and the amount they need it, up to whatever we moved out? So I think that, that's the only thing that's a concern to me, because otherwise, if they don't, you know, the town meeting system is tough, they got to only meet twice a year, and if you didn't think about it, there's no money. And, and that's not what, you know, if something comes up on July 1st, they got to wait till November to get it, and that's a real problem.
I don't know, I think most people budget for a year in advance, and that's not a problem for them.
Mark, I think though, you, you know, you'd have to wait to November, November for the first year only, I think, because after that, you could budget, in the part of the cycle for FY 25, you could budget as, as part of the regular budget with whatever monies had come in between, let's say, November of '23 and, and, you know, June 30th of 2024, but it would be part of your regular budget cycle after that.
With the generic appropriation.
Right, the generic appropriation, and, and, and once that money is generically appropriated, it's use it or it goes back into the stabilization fund? You know, do we know? I assume that's what it is.
You would, yes, you would do it like that, just, just like you do with the Capital Projects, make that same statement.
Would that cover the flexibility, you think, Lynn?
To some extent, I mean, it's still the twice a year.
Well, I mean, that's how the whole town operates, so.
No, I get it, I just, when we have the opportunity to do it a little bit differently, I like to try to explore that. I, I, I mean, they'll just have to, the good thing is, we're not changing it midstream. They haven't really done anything, so they would just get used to this way of how they're going to have the money to work with for it.
The, the other question is, is it important that we've been consistent with the six towns that are part of our health consortium?
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that, I'm just...
Meaning?
In terms of, every, each of the towns is getting money, I presume that if there's a program, we're going to try to assess all the towns, their, their fair share to participate, you know, are they all doing it the same way, or are they all going to be doing it?
As part of, sorry, the appropriation, or as far, as far as what they're going to be expending it on?
No, they, yeah, but I'm, I'm more concerned about, you know, if, if the health department comes up with a great plan for opioid money, we're going to say, okay, your share's 12% and your share's 18% for each of the towns, and, and, you know, the town's going to be able to, to do that, and it seems to me that it would be beneficial if all the towns at least talked about having the same process for appropriating this, this money.
Right.
And they may not need to, but I'm just saying, it'd be really tough if they came up a great system and everybody could appropriate the money, and town owner said, we can't do it till the fall, or vice versa, we could do it and they couldn't. I don't know.
Something I explore for, look into next week.
I mean, we, you know, we can certainly set it up, and not, whether we use it or not, put money into it or not, is a different...
I, I think the other one too that's not on there, Lynn, is, we talked about putting money in the wage settlement account.
Yep.
You know, what happened on the original cherry sheet that came out, is if you look closely, there's a line item in there for, the state normally reimburses for exemptions, that the town applies for the blind, surviving spouses and veterans. You might have noticed that that amount was zero on the governor's budget. It was because Long Meadow did not send in the information in a timely manner. So I've worked with our assessor, called the Department of Revenue, we now have that money, we now have all their information, they now have all our information, so I'm, I'm confident that the next reiteration of the cherry sheet is going to be minimally about $60,000 higher than, if everything else remains the same, we should now have a $60,000 line item, where it was zero. We had to, Paul Healy needed an update on his code enforcement people, it went from $50,000 to $64,000, so we took the orig, the first $14,000 out of that $60,000 that came in from the reimbursement of the exemptions. There's another $46,000 hanging out there, that we'd like to set aside in order to assist paying cost of living increases, and for the further implementation of the wage and classification study, to have that $46,000 supplement what was appropriated last year at the town meeting.
Implementation as in?
What it's going to cost the town in order to, one, if, if there's COLAs, take care of that, but, one, if there are, I don't say substantials, but if there are increases to salaries that are going up 6% and 7%, you know, that would be the source of revenue that, that would be the appropriation, that the, the implementation of the wage and classification study could be implemented from.
Why did the code enforcement officers go 14th grade?
He originally put in the $50,000, the exact same amount that was appropriated at town meeting for one half a year, when, when it was noticed, which was just a couple days ago, he said that amount should have been $64,000. So it was a, say, a miscommunication between Paul and Paul. You know, the information that I had still had the request of $50,000, but he had meant to put in $64,000.
The warrant article said 50.
The warrant article for this fiscal year, for half a year, said $50,000. We now have to fund it for a full year.
Okay.
So the full year for FY 24 is only going to cost $64,000, okay? But if you look at the budget, and I don't know which, which version of the budget you have, but the, the line item for that budget that he requested was only $50,000 again, instead of the 64.
Okay.
So a full year is only going to cost 64, it's not going to be, you know, two times the 50, so...
Gotcha.
Because I think they're working with 19 hours at least.
And we didn't have funds for the, for additional wages and sales?
There's not an article, not currently.
I thought we always...
So, yeah, we, last year, we did a, a larger one to fund collective bargaining agreements that were open, cost of living increases for non-union personnel, and there was a significant amount of money in there set aside to fund the wage and classification study. This article that was added is to fund the cost of living increases for the non-union personnel, separate from the wage and class study, because we don't know what that's going to say yet, and we don't know when that's going to be done to be implemented.
So $46,000 to fund COLAs for non-union employees?
Yes.
Is that, does that represent a percentage of...
It must.
Non-union?
It, it's like 1 and 1/4%. I think 1% was like 36,000, 34,000 or 36,000?
I don't remember.
It was, it was, I'd just say it was 35,000, it was plus or minus $1,000, $1,000, I forget the exact number.
Well, I, I'm, I would be ready to make a motion on creating the stabilization fund for the opiate funds coming into town, but are we going to just talk about it next week?
Yeah, we'll see a draft warrant article next week.
So we see a draft of what, of the...
Right, right, and one of the, the draft that you get for your next meeting will have that warrant article included.
Okay, thank you.
As will the, the wage settlement account for the 46, and, you know, it's up to you folks if you want to carry it forward or not.
So, I, I'm not proposing it be in this, this warrant for this town meeting, but I don't want to lose sight of the request that we look at authorizing ranked choice voting for town meetings, and it doesn't matter, we wouldn't do it now anyway, it takes a lot more, but, but, you know, I don't know what, where that fits into priorities, Lynn, but we just went through a lot of expense for...
This is, it's on our look ahead.
Okay.
For after budget season, because I think that that's an important thing to discuss.
Okay.
I think there's other ways around ranked choice voting as well, that Lynn and I have, we spoke about this when I met with Lynn, I think when you brought it up after one of the meetings.
Okay.
But we can go into it at another...
All I'm just looking to do is avoid the cost of...
Absolutely, especially than a preliminary on top of it as well, so...
First I went through it, I, I'm all for that.
You're going to go through it again soon.
No, there's no, there's no preliminary election.
Thank goodness.
No, no, I'm saying another election.
Hopefully, we'll keep running.
Was there supposed to be another zero after, on Article 8, after select persons?
Yeah, nice try.
Well, there are some towns that are paying.
On the other side of the decimal point.
But there are towns that are paying selectmen $2,200.
So it does...
The towns paying $5,000.
I was joking for the record.
But it does raise an interesting conversation that you may want to discuss, not removing yourselves from it, but the position itself. Those stipends should be analyzed every so often...
Periodically, right.
To make sure you're keeping pace. It's also a piece, you could ask, you could task your DEI committee with it as well, because sometimes that can be an incentive for people to run, or at least help offset the cost of you not being home.
My father was chair in East Long Meadow, just saying, they got a, they got a higher stipend.
And would that be part of the wage study?
No.
We can't include that as part of the wage study.
No, no, but...
The $37 in a week we get for, for the year?
You could, you could task a committee with it, you could create a separate subcommittee, or you could just do a more informal one, where we poll other similar-sized communities to find out what they're paying.
We could just vote on it like Congress?
You could, but...
Or we could have someone bring it up at town meeting.
I think a real good plan though is that, if you vote on it, you don't get it, but the next person does, and that's always kind of, or at least the next election, then you have to be reelected.
I think that's definitely the way.
So you don't, you don't necessarily benefit yourself.
No, you don't have to do that. People don't do that.
People don't do it.
It goes by the budget.
It's a best practice.
You'd have to wait a lot, a couple of years for, you know, well, you don't care.
So, Vanek, you want to adjourn us for the first time?
So, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Right.
All right, all right, good night, everyone, thank you.